The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Reedus?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mr. Vasquez?
Here.
Mr. Sims?
Present.
Mr. Bozek?
Present.
Mr. Brecker?
Here.
Mr. Graham?
Here.
Seven present.
All right, um, the last night, but uh, there was a request and dedication that jumped the line here. Always the same guy, I don't know why, but um, it's a simple one, so I think, I think it would be started granted. Um, township, I think we got, right, uh, fire? Um, go through it, uh, what is it?
West Porter?
West Porter.
Porter? It's right in the middle, Jer, it's right auditor, it's right before the auditor and right after
Thank you. When I was younger, I could be at two places at one time, but I've lost that now and I have to get out of the council meetings. Thank you very much. I'm Paul Beck, I'm here on the House of Representatives, and it can be, uh,
Are theirs on?
Got it.
Um, it's
Hey guys, your microphone on?
I'm sorry, as if you wanted to hear anything worth saying.
I could
Okay, all right, I'm sorry. Um, West Porter Township is here this evening because we are one of those unique entities where our governing board is non-elected, it is appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. So pursuant to DLGF requirements, we have to work with the county, or not have to, but we do, and the budget comes through you for review. Um, answer any questions you may have. We, we are for the most part, or we are, a conduit through which money passes to provide volunteer fire protection service for the Porter County side of Lake of the Four Seasons. We don't have any employees, we don't own anything. We enter into an annual contract with the volunteer fire force to provide fire protection.
I'd move to approve.
I second it.
The motion is second, they were done hearing you Dave? Um, one hundred and forty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, I think it's the same, correct?
Yep.
Uh, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. What do you got of, um, you got a capital fund? Is that, do you have two of them?
Nine nine six.
Is that it?
We have a capital fund, yes.
Yeah, is that the ninety-four thousand?
Yes.
Five?
Mr. President, I make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Easy, easy for you to say.
Thank you. All right, highway. Have a great night.
He was pushing his luck, Sylvia.
Eddie was like, "Game."
All right. All right, how are we?
Evening.
Um, local, one of those days, local roads and streets. It's like, there's an, is there an increase? This is
A decrease, you mean?
Decrease.
Is it a decrease?
I'll move to approve.
Thousand?
Second.
Motion second for two million eighty-five thousand?
How's it going down ninety thousand? Why is it going down ninety thousand? Or do you want to cover them individually, like vehicle repair, contractual services, motor vehicles and other equipment all went down?
Yeah, the, uh, I can go through the changes that I have listed here, road signs, increased cost of materials for road signs, or that's that increase, same with the motor vehicle repair, increase in parts over the last two years, you guys come in and get additional and transfers last two years.
Wait, I'm sorry, what, what, I don't see that as an increase here.
The reason is, is because it has the additional part built in, so with his additional, he gave out three hundred and twenty, and he actually, he took it back. Oh, okay, I'll go with, I'm sorry, I'll go through your point he gave me here.
So it's actually twenty thousand dollars less on view?
Correct, that, yeah, last year it was, the original budget was a hundred and seventy thousand, and I came in and got an additional, so I'm just trying to make it an even three hundred thousand. That's what that was.
Contractual services went down ten grand?
Uh, we came in and did an additional on that also.
Oh.
For, uh, more road striping.
Oh, that's great to hear.
Tried to clean it up and make it an even two hundred. Uh, lease purchase, we took money out of that during the year and transferred it, um, but we need to leave that in there because we have some trucks on order that hopefully show up, and now Mack Truck is on strike from what I heard, so. We ordered them a year ago, so they may show, they may not show. But in case they do show, we have the money for it.
They have a motion?
Motion and second, further discussion, all in favor of the two million eighty-five thousand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. MVH restricted.
Uh, the MVH restricted just piggybacks off of the regular one-one-seven-six, so there really is no
Nothing to do?
No budget on one-one-seven-three.
Most approved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Highway, one-one-seven-six, um, five million four hundred and seventy-five thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second.
What's the hourly increase, full-time increase for three hundred and eleven thousand dollars?
Um, I, that's the one forty-four I turned in, correct? That's, that's where these numbers came from? Okay, um, what I did was I, I, uh, last year our drivers got thirty cent raise, and they were given the four thousand dollar stipend, so I took the thirty cent raise and their, you know, added their four thousand dollar stipend, divided it out, what it came out to hourly, and, and would like to see them get a five percent cost of living in there, so that's where that increase came from.
So you got an increase in this, in your full-time hourly?
Yeah.
Our, all our guys are hourly, except for the office staff.
But the only increases we're supposed to have in the book right now are midpoint raises. Everything else was supposed to be removed. So if there's three hundred and eleven thousand
Okay.
aren't midpoint raises, is that correct?
No.
So how did the, why are these in there? Is this just a mistake, or?
No, because he asked for the increase. Well, I turned this in back in, you know, June.
It's fine, if you guys want to take it out, take it out.
No, I have no idea. I just thought they all were removed.
That's right.
So I, for one to be different just seems odd.
You're right.
This one also is slightly different because it's highway, and again, most of them are hourly. And again, taking
I get that.
count some of the one forty-four changes that we've made throughout the year at, uh, council meetings already, those, some of those raises are already reflected in there.
But the, when, they came before us, they got the raise, right? So why is it, why is we're still getting more increases?
That's just what he request, what he requested.
Again, this one is a different one because to me, highway is, is, again, they only get eighty percent of their salary or their budget, and then the state gives them their over twenty percent throughout the year once they show the balance.
So are we saying that we should, the, the one forty-fours that we approved, the, are we saying that those should stay until the end, and anything above and beyond that, we should wait till final reading?
Probably have to follow.
That's what we've been doing.
Is that what you guys want to do?
Is that correct? Are the first two meetings, there's no, no other ones that got through like this?
Correct, highways, the
Yeah, I mean, that's what we've been doing with all of them. We would bring them to midpoint. If they're already at midpoint, then they would get
All right, will you take out all the, just whatever we approved in the year? Will you take the rest out, Dave?
Otherwise, they could pretend
The raises that he
Double.
You know, what we decide in final rating.
Actually going to be the adopted budget, same as that, they had, um, a reduction of three hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven. So that's three, right?
Yep.
The two million and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-four reflects the adopted budget from twenty twenty-three. Um, that three hundred and eleven thousand is what was adjusted throughout the year. So you're seeing, um, there was a, last summer appropriation of three hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven. So if you want to bring it back to last year's, you'll see on the top right corner of your screen there, that's the same adopted budget as last year.
But they're already getting this money now, right? They're, they're getting paid.
They should have been getting paid this.
Whatever increases we approved during the year, yes.
They were just stipend last year.
This year we changed your, one of your mechanics, right?
Right, you, you eliminated one of the mechanics and gave increases to
Yeah.
a couple others.
So whatever we already approved this year, it's been there, if you can, yeah, and then whatever he included, the five percent takeout for the, on top of that, till we figure out what we're doing with everybody. It clears mud. Yeah, I mean, we shouldn't retract the raises approved during the year.
No, no. And what, what we're doing is we're, we're trying to get through all the numbers and talk about
No, I understand.
raises at the end, just, you know.
Them back in June, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I was just letting you know. I didn't want you surprised.
Yep.
Do we have a number, Dave?
Yeah, that
How is that number the same? We didn't approve three hundred and eleven thousand dollars raises for this year.
No, it's
It's a reduction.
It's a reduction.
I don't see the reduction. We were at twenty twenty-three budget was seventeen, or one million seven hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven. Now we're at two million.
So if you want to know, one-seven-two-zero-eight-nine-seven, we can do that.
I don't, is that right? I don't know. Is it?
That, I mean, that reflects the same budget that they have right
And then all his people will be at midpoint, and they would get an increase if we decided to do one countywide.
Now, again, the two oh three two seven six four is what was adopted last year, then they reduced their budget throughout the year, which brings it to the one-seven-two-oh-eight-nine-seven. So do you want to do what?
So basically what he's just asking is for what they took away to bring back?
Correct.
Where did he transfer that money to? Where did we put that money?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
You remember why we transferred three hundred and eleven thousand dollars out?
No. No, I never transferred any money out of hourly, or, you know, full-time hourly.
So he's saying that didn't happen?
Well, the three hundred and eleven is the difference between twenty twenty-three budget and the twenty twenty-four proposed budget.
But he just told me that twenty twenty-three adopted was the two million and thirty-two, two million and oh thirty-two seven six four, right?
But he also told you that he took an individual out and spread those monies around.
Right, throughout the year, right, that's what I'm asking, but that's three hundred and eleven thousand. He doesn't remember ever doing that. I don't remember ever, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Where, that couldn't have been just one person either, at three hundred and eleven thousand. I just don't want to screw up his budget, that's what I'm trying to
Well, I have a, for eleven seventy-six, I have a total request for the administration fund, um, eleven seventy-six of three hundred and forty-three thousand, and that's the first one.
Mm-hmm.
And the hourly, we have a total of three hundred and eleven thousand, which was the difference. Now, the previous year, we had, the requested budget was one million nine thirty-four five sixty-six, and then it went up to two thousand thirty-two seven sixty-three.
I'm not following any of those numbers.
Well, if you look at the second page, you have your initial one forty-four on the front, okay, and the page behind it will give you the details.
Where are you?
You don't have a second
Uh, you're prob, it's just probably later in the book.
It would be in your book.
All right, Dave, what's the bottom line right now?
I, I forget the twenty twenty-three total budget.
Which one?
Twenty twenty-three total budget, one million seven hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven.
Is that right?
That's for just the, the hourly line item, though, the bottom line of the whole
Yeah, I don't know.
one-seventeen?
Unless
Or, yeah.
since we
One-one-seven-six, five million?
Yep.
One hundred and sixty-three.
We need
And that removes the five percent raise.
And if we move that
So the, right now, the number with no raises that he added, just the raises that we approved during the year, five million one hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and ten dollars.
So it's less than last year's? Why is, uh, moving on, medical and life insurance up to two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars? Why is there such a large increase there?
Yeah, I can answer that. We don't put those numbers in.
Oh, okay.
Can you guys answer that?
Is it because you moved it out of MVH restricted? Is that what happened?
Um, no, that actually gets moved around during the year, but it's back and forth between MVH, nothing is ever budgeted per se out of MVH restricted, just during the year, depending on the hours are spent on restricted, then that
My, my guess is that we maybe in the last year or something, we paid for some of
So half of it is in, you have to look at it, it's too far, it's getting combined into one. So last year, half of that was in one-one-seven-three, one-one, and half of it is in one-one-seven-six. It all moves over together, then we took the new numbers out of the minutes, and then
Well, the question is, is it all coming out of two different?
No.
No, it's only one fund. They got rid of eleven seventy-three. They have zero in that right now. It's all coming out of eleven seventy-six. So all the numbers, including per, the insurance, all that will be coming out of eleven seventy-six. You see no numbers in eleven seventy-three. If you look to the right, it's all red. It's all been reduced by that amount.
Motion and second on the floor, is further discussion?
Hold on. Okay, but I just did the math, and if we added up last year's numbers, medical and life insurance went up eighty-five thousand dollars versus last year? I just took the medical life, the two oh eight two ninety-two from MVH restricted from last year, and the medical life from the next fund of six twenty-four eight seventy-six, added those up, and then subtracted from the nine eighteen eight ninety-seven, and it seems to be about eighty-five thousand dollars more.
Yeah, there shouldn't have been anything budgeted last year in one-one-seven-three for insurance. That would have just been during the year paid out of, you know, or moved over from one-one-seven-six into one-one-seven-three. Correct.
So what are you saying, guys? I don't know about eighty?
It's going to be tied to hourly full-time then, so
It's going to be tied to the higher number.
Yeah, so the total budget for twenty twenty-three was six hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-six. Uh, the adopted budget was eight hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-eight. So since we moved that, the hourly full-time back to twenty twenty-three total budget, that probably be reflective, we probably should make that same change then in hourly full-time then, to reflect that reduction then, and FICA as well.
So you're saying leave it as the same numbers as last year?
Well, if we took the one down, then that would make sense that you take them both down to the same threshold.
But I don't understand how medical and life insurance would be that far up, even if we left those original numbers. That, three hundred and eleven thousand isn't going to raise it eighty-five thousand. I think, was there, I don't know.
Who handles the medical and life?
The commissioners.
That's the commissioners.
Not, not in this budget. They have their own medical, they pay for their own medical and life.
Are they the same rates?
Yeah.
Same numbers? And this year's numbers are nineteen three forty-six?
Nineteen nine five, nineteen five five one.
Nineteen five five one this year. Three forty-six.
Bring that then back.
Who reports the numbers? Why would
All right, we're saving money.
Why would the commissioners cover everybody else's?
Some of them pay out of their own funds, so
A lot of them, the commissioners don't cover everyone, a lot of them.
Okay.
The individuals, they don't have a general fund, except they have other funds.
Okay.
They're taking out of the funny funds per se. You know, we have expo, we have the, um, MOH, we have nine-one-one, those are taken out of a different fund.
The numbers changed now.
Hold on, I think he's got to change perf too, so.
Good to go.
All right, whoever made the motions?
I'll amend it if it was me.
To be four million eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty? Second, agree with that number. Whoever made the second? Sylvia?
Second.
It's me.
All right, any further questions?
Yeah, the, uh, increase for two sixty-nine for the motor vehicles is, what are you guys doing there? Two hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-four, going from thirty thousand to three hundred thousand?
Um, back in the spring, came up with a five-year replacement plan on our equipment, and I believe I emailed it to all you back in maybe May or June.
Mm-hmm.
So if you remember last spring, we came in and did an additional, this is just to try and remove that additional and just put it into the regular budget. So we now have a five-year plan where we're going through upgrading equipment or adding equipment as needed.
Is that three hundred thousand?
Wow.
Can that be lessened at all to help with the
Well, we didn't even, we didn't, we're not using all of it this year.
Oh.
But some, there's some pieces of equipment that are going to cost three hundred thousand. You know, like, uh, this year I have slated in the plan our Hitachi, our big Hitachi excavator is getting up in hours, so we had it figured in at, uh, roughly three hundred thousand, not knowing what our trade-in value would be.
And you have money that'll roll over from this year into that?
No, no, the, the money from this year will go back into our unallocated.
I didn't know if you had a plan for it?
Jim, you said you don't have plans for doing that this year?
No, we do have plans for doing
You do have plans?
Correct, that, and I, I have copies of it, if you, I could give you all more copies of it if
Oh, that's, no, okay.
But, yeah, this, this coming up year, in our equipment replacement plan, I have two sides of it, LRS equipment, uh, part, and then the MVH part. The MVH part can end up coming out of one-one-seven-three in the long run, because a Hitachi excavator's only used for road construction. Um, so that can come out of restricted, and then out of the LRS side that you got already approved, we have a bucket truck that's been on order for about a year, that should be here hopefully this next summer.
But you're going to get some money for the trade-in, right?
Correct.
So can we lessen this number to say two fifty?
Well, I, I mean, I don't know what it's going to cost right now. I haven't even got out and got bid.
Just asking.
I mean, we're not going to go out and just start buying stuff.
Can you, you, can you buy equipment out of restricted?
If it is used for construction, for road construction preservation, yes, and since the Hitachi was, all it's used for is, you know, digging ditches, replacing culverts, then it can come out of restricted. Uh, like, the year after that, uh, go looking ahead into twenty twenty-five out of restricted, we have a, a smaller Hitachi, or a John Deere excavator that's getting up in hours, and it's too small for what we use, so we can upsize that, and then at that time, that can come out of restricted. So all of the equipment replacement plan out of MVH is designated that can come out of restricted.
All right, any further questions on this? Budget, four million eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. All right, what do we got? Overweight vehicle?
Move to approve.
Second.
I think, what is it, fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, roads match. What do we got, two million? The number?
Move to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. You done?
Oh, one more, right? Oh, no, that's a total. Thank you.
Hey, nice job going to that conference in Indy, learning how to do the road stuff. That's, that's pretty cool.
Well, yeah, like I said, it's a national thing, every four years, and it ended up being Indy this year.
Yeah, no, that was cool.
How to do the road stuff.
What do we got? Development and stormwater?
No, you're dang right.
All right, I think, where are we at?
Plan commission?
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello, hello, hello. What do we got? Kindred Bridge, on one-one-three-five, that's the budget. Seven million nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents? Sixty-eight dollars.
Sixty-eight dollars and zero cents, correct. Move to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
Discussion. See you none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Plan commission. What do you got? Anything going on? Um
Plan.
Number's up a little bit. Medical life insurance number, twenty thousand, is that it?
Why is that up? I'll refer to the, uh, auditor's office for that question.
I think, it's up.
Yeah, you can take it back.
You going to cover some of my medical insurance?
Mm-hmm.
Lady Ford to you.
Move to approve based on it not changing?
Eight hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred and forty
Forty-eight, yes, sir.
It's motion?
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sign. Stormwater.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's motion second at four million one hundred and eight two thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Motion second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. What do we got? You still here, unsafe?
Still here.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Wow.
What is that?
Unsafe building fund.
No change. Second.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, drainage maintenance, twenty-seven hundred, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Go do some drainage maintenance down there.
We'll keep spending this down. This is the remnant of the, uh, regulated drain assessments that we no longer Move to approve.
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Highway engineering. No, did I miss?
Stormwater.
Stormwater construction.
Move to approve.
Two million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. That's bond payment?
Bond, yeah, but remaining bond funds, two projects still to be executed out of this fund.
Oh, cool. Yeah, how long we got to pay out of that? Another twenty-five years?
No, not quite. I think we're under, we're well under twenty years at this
Twenty years?
Yeah.
We got some big projects out there still that we can manage at
Of course.
Big?
Yeah, of course.
Money?
Thank you.
Well, we could use some more, since we're talking about
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Yeah.
We prefer that to the auditor.
Hundred and sixty thousand.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, trail fund.
Motion?
Second. Five hundred, motion second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. I think you're done.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Run.
Thank you.
Hills, that was an easy one.
Have a good night, guys.
All right, for E-nine-one-one.
How you doing?
Hello, hello. Um, what do we got? An increase? It looks like
Holy cow!
An increase of salaries. So none of these are mid-term, mid, we took out you last year, right?
Uh, first-class communicators were brought to mid last year, but administrative staff was not.
Okay.
So, um, all of, I do have a list of those that are admit, brought to midpoint with So all of, I do have a list of those that are admit, brought to midpoint with the 2024 proposal. And then there is one administrative staff that I'm requesting additional on, and then I am requesting as well an increase for first-class communicators.
What's the one-fourteen, Ryan? Dave? Is that just the midpoint? Or has that, got some other request in it?
Yeah, I don't believe this was midpoint.
All right, so you've got some other requests in there, you said what are the?
Would you like me to break them down for you?
Yes.
Okay.
What are you trying to do?
Okay, I, I guess I'll start with the, since we went to midpoint last year, I'll just start with the first-class communicators. I'm requesting a five percent increase. So that actually brings them to, they're currently at twenty-three ninety-four hourly, that would bring them to twenty-five thirteen hourly. The other, I'll read right here, I have a list. Administrative staff, including assistant director, training coordinator, quality assurance manager, GIS specialist. Those 2024 proposals are the midpoint. The executive assistant, I am requesting the additional beyond midpoint. We, we combined two administrative assistants, I think it was two years ago, and she's been doing the job of both. So I am requesting a little bit of a bump there for, for that position. Then I'm also, I'm requesting three percent for the director position, and that's, that should cover all of these salaries.
That's you?
Yes, that's me.
All right, are you, Ryan?
Holy cow.
Dave, are you able to take everything out but midpoint?
Yeah, he's running to go grab the Form 144s there.
And then we'll consider everything.
So looking at, just looking at these salaries, a director with the three, it's almost a forty thousand dollar difference between the director and the assistant director?
Right now, there is that, that disparity, yes.
That's a wide, that's a pretty big gap.
I guess I would like to tighten that.
I'm sorry?
I would like to tighten that gap, yes.
Well, she, we're sending for you, but I'll see.
Take some for you and give it to them? That'll, that'll tighten it. Just to suggest you.
Is that, yeah.
What's going on over there, Bozak?
I'm laughing because he said exactly what we were all thinking.
Yeah. Oh, man.
It's a big gap. It's a big gap.
You guys able to do it?
So as a director position, are you compared to other nine-one-one directors, or is that?
Actually, if you compare my salary to Hendrick's, which has a smaller population, but similar in response, I'm making less, this position makes less. I have, if you're not aware, I have taken upon myself the project manager position for the P one transition for the entire county. So I think that three percent is well-deserved.
Is that three percent on if we give a county, you just want three percent if we decide to do four percent? You four percent on top of that three, do you?
I would be happy with four percent.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I'll take four percent, I'm asking three percent.
I'm not saying we're doing four percent.
Are you at full staff yet?
Curious.
We are not, we're getting there, we just recently hired four more.
So where, where are you staff-wise?
We are five, six down, I'm sorry, six down.
Six down.
From thirty-eight, we're fully staffed at thirty-eight, we're six short.
Are you still losing people to other agencies?
We are not, not to other agent, well, not to.
Or to other, are you still losing people?
No, we haven't lost anyone since our last meeting. Councilman Brickner, so I can tell you where we are. I have a five-year breakdown of dispatchers that were new hires and also dispatchers who left. So this is strictly dispatch statistics, this has nothing to do with administration. In 2019, we had twelve dispatch new hires, we had twelve dispatchers who left. 2020, we had, 2020 was COVID, so people stuck around. We had six people who were new hires and five who left. 2021, we had eight who were new, twelve who left. 2022, we had seven who were new, eight who left, and this year, we're at twelve new and ten who left. So this is a pretty consistent number if you look at the past five years.
However, we're hoping that that's going to change now.
Absolutely, that's my, oh, yes, with the.
Adjustment that we made.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, this is not personal, but I think that once we get to full staff, and once people stop leaving, and once we kind of get nine-one-one stabilized, maybe that's the time to ask for a raise for yourself. That's just my opinion.
Okay, well, I understand.
And a forty thousand dollar gap between number one and number two is, I think you're correct, I think that's something you need to maybe take a look at.
I also want to bring to the attention.
What do wage studies?
Have take-home cars for private use.
Where is that paid from? Is that the commissioner, does that pay for that?
Hey, was there a wage study?
General fund.
It's not a general fund?
Yes.
Who has take-home cars? How many vehicles?
Those two.
Oh, both of them? Oh.
We do.
I knew you did, I didn't.
That's, that's a lot, big gap.
Yeah.
Did we okay that this year?
Take-home vehicle?
How long is that?
That's not our policy.
They've had it for a while.
Yeah, we've had take-home vehicles, the department has take-home vehicles.
You're required to respond twenty-four-seven to the facility.
Be honest with you, I think, and this is just a can of worms, I'm sure, 2007, eight, nine, we were audited by the IRS, and they stated that, I mean, the individuals that did not have a twenty-four hour, it was just the sheriff's police that were allowed to have take-home cars. So you might want to check on the guidelines there.
All at the commissioners and their attorney, you know.
I'd like to make a statement that dispatchers, nine-one-one is considered first responders in the state of Indiana.
But I mean, what would happen, at three o'clock in the morning, do you ever get called in to go into the?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yes, we do. We have, we've just had recently fiber cuts with our frontier lines where we were called in.
New?
I would. Had a influx of calls due to a.
It was done in 2011.
Gas, gas leak? BP?
I responded at that time to help with high volume of calls. That was around nine o'clock, ten o'clock.
But, but when you responded, you just went to the office, right, the nine-one-one center? As opposed to other people, they have take-home vehicles, they're being dispatched in other areas, not to their place of work. Okay, I just want to make sure we clear that, that, I mean, it's, it's, in some ways, it's no different than our director of, I don't know, facilities here getting called in at three o'clock in the morning, you know, that.
Can I ask why this is on the, why this is open for discussion when these vehicles have been take-home vehicles for the department for several years?
Because we're looking for ways to save some money. And, and, and I will tell you that I've been in, for those that know me, I go to a lot of departments, and one thing that has come up several times is, why do they have these vehicles? And it makes sense, because, and I don't have an answer, because I, they were before me, but I'm just telling you what the scuttlebutt is out there, you know? And, and so it's, it's a natural thing to.
And it's part of the compensation as well, so when we're talking about a salary of a hundred thousand dollars and a take-home vehicle, that's.
It's like another ten thousand dollars.
A good benefit.
I would love to have a, a gas card and insurance paid, and I come here to the building and I get called in once in a while, that'd be nice, but I don't get that.
Well, would you like statistics on other counties throughout the state? I can provide them to you.
No, we're just worried about our own county.
Okay, well, I mean, I obviously worry about other counties as well when we did a rate, wage study to compare wages, so.
Speaking of wage study, where, your numbers for the director and assistant director, we did a wage study on that, correct? You were a part of that wage study?
That's correct. And mine was, if you remember, director positions had a, had a bracket essentially, it wasn't just a, a, a static number. It was kind of a, between this and that, so I'm well within that.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that, that doesn't, that does seem like a huge discrepancy, so we'll look back at the wage study, but is there any other?
Yeah, so Brian and Dave, what did you, you guys remove the one-fourteen, one hundred and fourteen? What about, so the two fifty for medical life insurance, there wasn't anything budgeted for that last year?
Correct.
Where was that being paid from?
Wasn't.
No one paid for medical or life insurance?
Well, I, again, I can't speak of where they had been taking it from the last couple of years, but there never been a place, someplace for.
Yeah, yeah.
For people.
Yeah.
That commissioner.
And we discussed everything in.
Yeah, so what, that number is what, the medical life, it's two fifty?
Two fifty.
Two fifty, and it's new.
Yeah, but the new thing is what, where did that?
Two.
Because that was being paid out of somewhere, so there should be a savings now.
I thought commissioners.
Uh, general.
It wasn't out of the twelve-twenty.
Yeah, I think.
Medical and, yeah, it was.
We've covered it for a while.
That's correct.
We covered it where, I'm sorry?
Foundation.
Oh.
Some, yeah. But now that that budget's getting.
Okay.
Getting healthy.
That only covers about ten people, right?
Well, that's another thing. What is their surcharge of?
Yeah, that's the surcharge, right, so.
We might want to take a look at that before we.
Well, we can definitely. Look at it.
Is that what's on the screen, the state?
Yep.
That's the surcharge fund?
Correct.
There's the balance right there, where's the balance at?
Is it cash balance?
One point five million?
Correct.
You're bringing in?
Brought in one point three, this year spent one point five. And the only reason that's one point five is because we took the two hundred and fifty from them for the medical life insurance that are ready this year. Otherwise, they'd be spending, time for time.
What else can we move over there? Training and ed?
Can you move anything? Because they only get.
I mean.
Won't it be expended?
What can we move over?
Last year, I moved two things into the lineup, there's, there's eligible expenses that must be, you know, met from the twelve-twenty-two. And I moved training and education, and I moved other equipment. I'm removing other equipment from that based on the fact that I got fire station alerting already approved, I don't know, I no longer need that. Training and education I'd like to keep there. The, moving the medical and life insurance into the 2024 was not something that I was aware of until this moment. So that's news to me.
Medical life would be good.
Yeah, that was not paid out of the twelve-twenty-two, but apparently someone believes that it should be now.
Do you have any idea where it was last year?
I didn't, medical and life insurance, I don't have the exact numbers because it didn't come out of the two budgets that I work from.
Oh, okay.
So I, I can't.
I was just curious if you.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Where am I?
Surcharge should be.
Where's the other budget at? Where am I?
Forty, the forty-nine-twenty-two is foundation.
That's right.
Get that, yeah.
Yeah.
That's at the end.
On that later.
Right. And that's where the difference is of fifty-six, well. Why is the difference only going down fifty-six thousand? Okay, we're shifting that. It's almost a million dollars out of the foundation budget. I'm gonna have to look at that to see. Two hundred and fifty thousand, let's see if we can push some other things into this budget for a little while. And maybe we can have a conversation next, or on the twenty-fourth or fifth or whatever it is, and you can tell us yes or no, what we can move into there. You know, it's got a nice surplus, a nice cash balance of one point five right now, so.
I'm confused, because we're budgeting two point eight or something around, over two million, if there's only one five in it, it only brings in how much a year? Is, is it big enough to support it?
It's been getting pretty healthy, though.
It's got, it's got one point five in it now, right? What does it normally bring in?
It dropped from last year, I have a running total.
I'm with you, I just want to make sure there's money in it to do it.
Around two million?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Around two million?
It brings in every year, so it'll be about three point five? Okay, thank you.
All right, where we got with the number? We took the raises out, two point seven, two-three? Is that right? Two million seven hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred? What's that?
We did.
It's in there.
Oh, you did take it out.
Yeah.
In the two fifty.
In there, so, all right.
I'll move to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 So. But those discussions have been ongoing about moving things back into there, so whether it was a surprise today or not, it shouldn't have been a surprise, but.
The, the medical life?
Yeah, I know the discussions were had with Vicki about it, I know, I mean, whether you knew it was coming or not, I mean, this.
No, I had discussions last year about the two line items that I specifically mentioned, and that was the training and education and the other supplies, other equipment budget, actually.
So foundation budget we'll do later, so you're good?
So if I understand correctly, now that is in fact going to come out of the twelve-twenty-two, based on this.
So far, yep.
We could change it during third reading, but that's how it's set up right now. And we could change it later tonight, but right now, that's how it's set up. Is there a reason you're saying it that, is there a?
No, I just, I, I'm glad that I know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure, thank you.
I think we're good, the nine-one-one, I mean, let's, we'll just, it'll be part of the budget later, foundation, so.
So if you could just help me understand, so what I have proposed is, has not actually been approved, right?
Correct.
Okay.
All the raises you're talking about?
Yes.
No, it has not been approved. We'll get to the end here, we've got some work to do with the commissioners, you know, coming up this afternoon and probably next week, and to see where we're at, and then we'll, we'll come back and look at, we've got a bunch of requests for other employees, we've got all kinds of raises, there's a pile of stuff that we've got to set aside and see what we can afford to do, you know, in terms of raises and extra employees, new employees, so.
So regarding this, was anything approved, or I, I'm totally.
Just last year's.
Just last.
Just last year's.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, the, the midpoints that we, you know.
Yeah, this year.
Anybody that needed to come up to midpoint that wasn't included last year, that was only halfway, there, that's been approved.
Okay, so we're still waiting, there's still, there's going to be discussion regarding whether or not first-class communicators, because, because we know last year, first-class communicators were brought to mid.
Correct.
So as of right now, any type of raise for them is not in discussion, because last year that was taken care of, is, am I understanding correctly?
They're at midpoint now, yeah.
They're.
Well, we're still trying to get increases, we're still looking at maybe a stipend, maybe an increase, if we can get there, we're not there yet. That would be discussed on the third day, or the third reading, I, I don't want to skip ahead, but that's our hope, is that we can do an increase, we can help with some of these things. We might not be able to do specifically what you're asking for, but we might do something across, maybe, I don't know.
So this is based, this is just to midpoint?
Yeah, everyone from midpoint on other budgets, we approve, and additionals are all being pushed again.
Okay.
So now, don't run back and say we're not giving raises, that's, please don't do that, we're not, you know, we just, first move was.
Everybody watches these, everybody in my department watches these, so they'll figure out.
The first move was to kind of finish that promise to get everybody to midpoint that we didn't do last year, and then when we get through some of these other line items that, you know, are being requested, see where we're at the end of today. And I, I know we're, we're, yeah, we're gonna have to find ways to cut to give raises on top of the midpoint. But our goal, I think, for most people is to give raises, like it's been every year. And I, we gave two million dollars out in salaries and stipends last year, what do we say? I keep repeating it, one point four million was, you know, actually increases.
One point three.
One point three, seven hundred thousand was the, the stipends, two million dollars. So to get to midpoint is like almost six hundred thousand, so I mean, just in two years, the wage study increases to get to midpoint is two million dollars. We've given out two million dollars of raises, and I know everybody's up here telling us, it's not enough, we can't hold anybody, we're leaving, I mean, two million dollars in raises in two years is, everybody's still telling us that we can't keep anybody, so, but.
But.
Well, I know, I know that you are, you're the fiscal body, and you're well aware that core inflation is sixteen percent. With food and energy, it's twenty-four.
Yeah, the sheriff put us an increase on the food bill. So you know where we're at. The auditors told us comfortably to increase the budget of one point four million next year. That's where the safe number is, okay? The first meeting we had, we increased it over a million. Now we're at one point eight or one point seven as of last meeting, one point eight. So we've got a lot of work to do. We may or may not get there. We're trying to. And we all understand inflation. I mean, it's hitting us all. The sheriff had the same thing. I mean, with his his food bill, I mean, it was a huge increase. And it's just something we're, as a county, trying to absorb and not increase taxes. That's our main thing, is try to take care of our people, be safe, and take care of, you know, the residents as well by not raising taxes where we're at right now. So it's a tough thing. I get where you're coming from, but for our angle, it's bad too. I mean, not bad, but we're gonna get there. We'll get there. But it's gonna take some pencil sharpening.
Thank you.
Are we done for now? Thank you.
Eight tuned. EMA general fund. Clients.
What's up?
Where we at?
Increase.
There was an increase at midpoint. You know, he wanted the watch commander, I think he, did you take that out?
Yeah, I took that out.
Okay, I know you mentioned that. I know you left, you talked and read about it.
So these are all midpoints in the.
Those are midpoints and just some other increases right there, and looks like.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Three hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars.
Correct.
Dues and subscriptions are up pretty big. What's that?
Yeah, that's for, we're trying to get a database to house our procedures and our policies where, right now, we have to manually track that. Why that becomes really difficult is a good portion of our agency is volunteers. So they're not in every day to where we can have them read and sign off on procedures and be contacted on changes. Sometimes those are really important due to it being an emergency piece of equipment, and they need to know that change. So this allows us to not only send that to them through the database, but track signatures electronically. Councilman Brickner had purchased this when he was at nine-one-one for the nine-one-one center, but EMA never was able to get that. So this would just put us in concert with what they do as far as the database.
Can we just bill Mike for this then?
I think we should.
Sounds like he's.
Yeah, no. Well, I mean, it has worked out really well for nine-one-one. I've spent some time over there looking at it. The other thing it allows us to is you're able to put job classes in and what qualifications are and track training in that as well. Instead of trying to manually do it and keep up with that. So it's gonna make that task a lot, not just easier, but more efficient and take less time to do it. And so what we're trying to do is become way more efficient with the personnel that we have. Then that allows us to do some of the things that we need to do because it's freeing up some time that way.
And how many of your volunteers are utilizing?
So normally, we like to have twenty volunteers. We're at about fifteen right now. We're recruiting some new ones. So that's twenty people, though, that we're contacting. And right now, we have about forty-five procedures, not counting the policies. Some of them are pretty detailed, too. Our command trucks, SOP for just setting up the command truck, general setups, thirty-six pages. So they're pretty detailed procedures, and this lets us track changes, what's necessary, and then making sure people are signed off on those. Everybody has to be contacted on every procedure, a minimum of once a year. That's after they receive the initial training and hands-on training on that. But a minimum of once a year, they all have to be contacted on all of those procedures. But then, in addition, anytime there's any change to a procedure, that affects them, so they have to immediately be contacted as well. So this helps us to track that.
Further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same, EMA hazard. Substance.
Thanks, Mike.
Does that approve the training too, Jeremy?
What's that?
Does that approve the increase in the training too that we had? I just didn't want to.
Yes.
Yeah, approved everything.
Want to make sure.
I'm surprised, but they approved everything for you. They let that budget fly with an increase. I don't know.
Lance has tried to cut every.
What happened there.
Thank you.
Andy was ready to fight the judges the other night. Going money at you. All right, where are we at? Is this?
Which one are you on?
No. Twelve twenty-one?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, they're out of order. Okay.
Where are we at?
Uh, make a motion to approve. What's the increase of twenty-five hundred for per diem? Is that just an increase to your volunteers?
Which one are you on?
We're on hazardous substance.
Forty-three thousand, two hundred.
I don't.
One, one, two, two.
I don't see an increase on there.
For per diem, it went from twenty-five hundred to five thousand?
One, two, two, one.
Oh, I don't.
No.
No, that's, that was for, that was, that was for the training, Andy, on the general fund.
So you don't need this?
No, we do. That's what I was asking, was that approved? That was out of general fund, right?
No, this is called per diem.
Yeah, that's out of general fund.
You have a per diem in general fund for five thousand. You also have a per diem under hazardous substances for five thousand. It used to be twenty-five hundred.
That's hazmat, I think.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it on the sheet.
So he doesn't, so can we adjust that back to twelve? Twenty-five hundred, I'll amend my motion.
Yeah, I don't think there was any increase per diem, because what we did last year was the volunteers for EMA got a per diem to make, put them in concert with hazmat, so there shouldn't be any increase on.
If I seconded it, I'll end it.
Yeah.
All right, for the forty thousand, seven hundred and fifty, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. EMA District One Task Force Fund, forty twenty. Uh, increase of thirteen thousand, three hundred and sixty, the number forty-four thousand.
And that's just budgeted, Jeremy. And that's because they're going to be replacing equipment, but that money does not come from the county each.
It's all the.
Yeah, exactly.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Now we're back to.
Ellie.
Now we're back.
Yeah, I believe.
Yeah. Going down the agenda.
I know, I'm doing the same thing.
Just in the fund order.
Yeah, fine.
Make a motion.
Thousand motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
Should be it.
You're good, Lance?
Thank you.
Whatever, whatever you did to Andy over there, good job.
You're gonna get me in trouble.
Parks.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We'll start the conversation. I did that last time, and we ended up not getting the salary.
Yeah, you were jumping the gun, man. All right.
He didn't get a second.
There's a.
Yeah, I retract.
There's an increase. Motion dies for lack of a second, right? There's an increase of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. Um, salaries are those midpoints?
Yes.
So there's an hourly increase?
Yeah. Yeah, that is largely to increase the pay rate. That's part of the one forty-four. That'll come up at the third reading, from an hourly cap of nineteen to twenty-one to make us more competitive and to hire additional staff in the summer.
What buildings and structures are you repairing?
So that is our building maintenance. For the increase in that one, that's just the cost of wood, metal, screws, nails, everything is more expensive.
I'll remake my motion to approve.
The six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Yep, second.
Second discussion further. Seeing all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, park operating. It's like there's an increase in a hundred and fifty thousand and twenty-six dollars. Total is three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-five.
I, for, yeah, I already had this conversation with Jake, so we've taken everything out of our additions.
Oh, those was his request about some extra people and stuff?
Correct, and we'll deal with those on third.
So well, just tell us what you were, what you were asking for. Sell us, tell us, show us.
What, is there anything else you're asking for, or is it same as last year's budget?
It's actually a little less than last year's budget. We basically just restructured that account. Again, staffing is our biggest issue right now. So the biggest change is, instead of having originally seventy-five thousand in our hourly, I moved event expenses money around and put five into hourly. And that's really the only change. And then additionally, twenty-five thousand into capital.
Thirty-nine thousand.
So we essentially just restructured it.
Yeah.
So right now, you're asking for two hundred and six thousand out of that budget?
Two fifteen-five. Two hundred and fifteen thousand five.
Look at the screen, because it's showing something different, so you might want to point out to them what's wrong. That something's wrong, because they're only coming up with.
Yeah, they're only showing two oh six.
Tony knows how to read.
All right.
Better than I.
There should be one oh five, a hundred and five thousand in hourly. And then in event expenses, there should be fifteen thousand. And then in advertising, twenty-five thousand. Other supplies, fifteen thousand. Consultants, eight thousand. Livestock supplies, nine thousand. The difference might actually be in the FICA. I have ninety-five hundred in FICA. That might be a miscalculation on my.
Oh, because you're doing a higher.
Mm-hmm. I did that on a, on a different hourly, I think.
Gotcha.
And then training and education, two thousand. Dues and subscriptions, two thousand. Capital, other equipment, twenty-five thousand. So that's where, that's where we've got discrepancies in FICA as part of that. There we go. So yeah, my math on FICA was wrong is all that was.
So two eleven, six twenties, what you're asking for?
Yeah.
So around ten thou, or sixteen thousand less than last year?
Yeah, because this is our operating fund, so this is the revenue that we generate. So I've got to make sure we've got those funds and that account is sustainable.
So you were trying to add two, you're trying to shift two part-time people or hourly people to full-time in this? Is that what you're trying to do?
No, the original plan is actually to come back on the twenty-fourth, for all of them to come out of the general fund. So part of that conversation will be if the operating fund has any capacity to handle that. That was some trial numbers to see what that number would look like. So that's kind of where, where that was. Now, the actual request is gonna come out of the general fund.
There would need to be an APs to the summer camp fees in order to be able to sort of person out there.
Yeah.
That said, it's woefully need. I'll be the first to admit that when I was sitting over there. You don't need more people, but they, they really do, and it's starting to show.
And this one actually pays for itself.
Yeah, this does.
Hopefully. Mike Johnson used to say woefully.
But he's all working on a grant.
Yeah.
Supplement part of a second, so.
Yeah, yeah, so there's, with the, two of the positions, one's a nationalist, one's a communications and rentals. So with the full-time nationalists, what we can do is we can grow our camp program. We can restructure that a little bit, grow it. We can also run more programs. Right now, our programming revenue is about a hundred and twelve thousand, and that's with one full-time and two part-times. I normally have four part-time nationalists. Their hiring is rough. I'm sure you guys all heard that a time or two up here the last few weeks. But with a full-time nationalist, what I can do is we can grow camp, we can adjust our fee structure, we can add some additional programming and really push that. Because right now, two of the people can only work twenty-nine hours a week as opposed to thirty-five. So I'm missing out on a lot of flexibility, a lot of weekend hours, a lot of extra programming, a lot of revenue that that full-time nationalist can generate. Same thing with the communications and rentals. Our rentals, right now, the data have brought in about forty thousand. And that is with our part-time rentals coordinator quitting and going full-time elsewhere for a rentals communication gig. And me pawning that responsibility is off to our assistant superintendent, our recreation supervisor, and program director. So if I have somebody that can dedicate to that, I can, again, generate that position's salary on its own. So they have the ability to generate their own revenue and eventually pay for themselves, fund themselves in the long run. And then the other one is maintenance. You know, we've got fifty-some-odd structures, seven-hundred-some-odd acres. We're putting in new playgrounds, new shelters, new amphitheaters. Got to take care of this stuff. Keep it up, so.
Do you have a?
I mean, that's the real big ask for the, for the positions that's gonna happen on the twenty-fourth. That's the, that's the bulk of our, our true request is those three positions. Everything else is pretty minor in retrospect.
Why are you taking care of those in the meeting on the twenty-fourth and not for next year's budget? You want it for this year?
It's on next year's budget request, so that was.
But we just.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
He already knew that. He was waiting till.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, that was submitted with this, with this budget.
We'll make sure we get with the auditor's office and give us a list of everybody that, you know, has asked for. So we can reflect back on everybody that's asked for new positions and rate individual raises. So you're operating parks about nine hundred thousand dollars or something total, our parks in the county? So less than a million?
I'll make a motion to approve the two elevens.
Funds, it's two different budgets. Motion for two hundred and eleven.
Second.
Six hundred and twenty. Motion second. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Wildlife donation, twenty-four thousand, two seventy-five.
Motion approved.
Motion.
Second.
Second discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. We good?
I think you're done.
That was it?
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
We don't need parks. Get rid of them.
Yeah.
Any bigger jails? I'm kidding. The Anaduums Tourism. Hello, 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 hello. You guys got this calendar, right?
Yeah, we'll be seeing you next month. Sorry about that. I, uh, I set up.
Around two, I think that, I think. Shift that meeting, so.
Yeah, but I do apologize for that.
Oh, it's, we've done a little shift in to try to make some things work out. People out of town, some bonding stuff, some. Of everything. So two million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars is at the budget I'm looking at. Three hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Why is the number in our book different than the number on the screen? I got two million, one hundred and seventy-six, nine eighty-three, but the screen says two million, four hundred and ninety-four, nine eighty-three.
Um, yeah, so that's, so the, yeah, I don't know. Looks like, can we go back? Would we? Hey, the number that they got is two million, four hundred and ninety-four, nine eighty-three up top there.
Oh, I don't have a gift shop thing in my book.
Is that, so let's just start at the top.
Everything is midpoint.
Okay, I was gonna ask, Ryan, Dave, those are midpoint, seventy-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine. Looks like an hourly increase, though. That's, that's up. Medical life?
I don't understand the, what you just stated, that it's midpoint. I only see one raise on the one forty-four, and that's the operations director.
Those were all approved.
So you're already at midpoint?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then what is seventy-four thousand, six eighty-nine? For the salaries?
I think for the.
Are they adding that?
That's the difference between last year and the midpoint.
So Andy, we had to come before you guys in January for these salaries, so that would have been the difference from last year?
Yeah.
It wasn't a done until January, so that's what, why it looks different?
Yeah.
It was approved in November, but we had to physically do it in January.
The additional, yep.
That makes more sense. Thank you.
Maybe I don't know what midpoint means.
She answered us.
I know it's proved by the.
That's good.
And then the total budget request is, what's up at the top is two million, four hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three. That's what we submitted?
That is what he submitted, but that isn't what we're seeing.
Now, the one seventy-five, we're creating a line item. We haven't actually opened a gift shop. That's gonna depend on our negotiation with the National Park lease and a lot of other moving parts. But that's our ultimate goal, is to be in position, so we have to have a line item for it.
What do they pay?
Because they're adding a person, then a hundred and fifty thousand for supplies, so that's probably the difference from what we have versus what you had, am I right, asked for?
Yeah, so, so we're, we've asked for, for that particular line item, I believe it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what that is.
It's like some gift shop supplies and I think adding a person or.
Exactly. The hourly employees are increasing as well.
We have that in our book. The only thing we were missing was the one seventy-five.
The one seventy-five, that?
Difference.
Yep.
And it may have just gotten cut off, Andy.
No, yeah, this book could have been printed before.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to understand it.
So we need a line item so that when we get to that point.
The money can.
We can flow it in. We have a place to.
That was one of the things that you were gonna talk about last.
Right, and that'll be coming next week, because we, because we have to start this year.
Yeah.
And then next year, and it's, it's new to us, so we're not really sure. It's, this is our first venture, if this all moves forward in our lead negotiations.
There to put it? Well, there's gotta be.
Well, there is, yes.
Yeah, there's a current, a current bookstore there.
Okay, yeah. I have a question on the tourism, on other services. It looked like we were given Expo, Memorial Opera House, Museum, and Parks. Seventy thousand, I believe. I just wanted to.
I believe it's a hundred and fifty, is it?
It's a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty thousand for the four. The four venues, the parks, Expo, museum, and Opera House.
Where's that one hundred and fifty going for all those different?
We divided up according to your direction years ago.
Where's that?
There's a percentage.
Probably. Yeah, I'm going off the twenty, twenty-three book, it's kind of a little bit. Down there, I think, is added other services. Other services, if you could, where's other services at on here?
So it's line item, three, nine, nine, three?
Yeah. Wait.
I know it's a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Three, nine.
Nine, nine, one, oh?
One, oh, yes.
It is one, oh? It's three, nine, nine, ten, right?
Other services, one-fifty, so all of one-fifty is getting split up. Is it equally between Expo, Memorial Opera House, Museum and Parks?
No, so there's, I don't have it with me, there's X amount that goes to the parks. And then what's left over goes, it's.
It's three-way.
Believe among a three-way split with Memorial Opera House, Expo Center and.
Museum?
Museum.
It used to be equal, and at some point, the council changed it.
I was actually looking to see if we can get some more for parks and.
We can't do it.
But it's your formula, so it's, I don't know if it's formula between the commissioners and.
Yeah, I was trying to, like I said, look and see that, so.
With the Memorial Opera House, I thought all that money, that it was just going for restoration.
This is.
That's totally different than.
No, the thought was, and I don't remember what Brett tried to ask, I don't remember what, I don't want to say instigated it, but what initiated, I guess, was the.
Yeah, I asked about it.
Yeah, it was, no, when it originally started, it was, I think the question might have been, well, why are we promoting all these other things? Why aren't we promoting our own venues? So I think that was when then this money was kind of decided, well, then, well.
It started out at how much?
Well, it's increased during the year, so it's been various amounts. But it went from eighty-nine-one to a hundred.
It was eighty-nine-one and went to a hundred-and-fifty, the allocation was changed.
Some type of percentage, because I'm sure you're not gonna.
It is a percentage.
A percentage of your budget or that will go.
It's not a percentage, it was just an agreement between the council and us.
So it's a flat, it's been a flat hundred-and-fifty?
For a couple of years.
They would be able to find out exactly what it, you know, I just was.
What do you want to put, a three-hundred thousand? Is that what you're saying right now?
Hey, if it's too hard, that'd be great.
We can't do it. We're struggling to do the hundred-and-fifty.
They've got, they've got building repairs, they gotta take.
We got all kinds of stuff to do.
And it really is our building, right?
It is your building.
So. Well, they have a building maintenance, I mean, if we're gonna talk, I mean, they have a building maintenance fee. They're putting five-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars a year. And so I'd imagine you're socking up your money for your building maintenance.
We are, we are. It's a two, it's a seventeen-year-old building, so we're now starting to see some.
Significant ex amounts.
Yeah. Say, I know the metal roofs last for, you know, twenty-five years, a couple of years.
We've got a rubber roof and metal roof. So the rubber roof is a twenty, or the parking lot's a twenty years. Got some significant changes that are starting to happen, so.
So if we approve this one-seventy-five for the gift shop, would that come from our general fund or is that coming?
No.
Your fund?
None of this comes from your.
But that's what I thought. I just want to make.
Motion?
Not yet, I don't.
I think we had a motion.
I'm, I make a motion to approve this.
At two million, four-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-three?
Well, I'm looking at two million, one-hundred-and-seventy-six.
That's without the gift shop.
We're talking.
It doesn't include the hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. That wasn't put in there for the gift shop.
To that, this is not in here.
Okay.
They're gonna have I love Sylvia Graham mug in there, stuff like that.
We may. Those would be big sellers.
Fan towards the gift shop. Are we covering it all? Are they doing anything?
Well, that's the issue right now. The federal government has their gift shop in there.
Oh, they have one in there?
Yes, so this.
Well, it's not the federal government, it's Eastern National, which is a not-for-profit that is in there and.
Will they be competing gift shops?
No, we're going to.
Stuff.
We're switching gift shops, that's our goal.
You guys were there when they dedicated the trail.
What trail?
Now.
Oh, my gosh.
Is this something that's going to be separate from your building?
No, it's inside the building. So it would be Eastern, it would be replacing Eastern National with us as money. So we can start to do exhibits and stuff like that and repair exhibits and.
We've got a lot of stuff that we need to do up there.
Well, it looks beautiful. I go by it every.
Constructing wall.
What's that?
You're gonna be constructing, you're a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. What are you gonna be doing, building a?
No, so we, so Eastern National would have to completely vacate. And then we would be starting a store from scratch. And this would be to purchase the merchandise to get started with the store.
What's the odds? I mean, how is that looking?
In terms of getting the space?
Well, yeah, getting the space.
It's heated negotiation, let's just say.
What you projected, what you projected in?
Well, yeah, I mean, but if it does happen, we don't spend the money.
So, so Mike, we are looking at, they're probably doing a gross of six-hundred thousand. And we, as an entity, do not get anything from that. And the national park gets very little. Our local national park gets very little. And we believe that we can hopefully go beyond six-hundred thousand. And that's gross, so that doesn't include, you know, cost and stuff. So then those monies would be earmarked to help us with our exhibits and so forth. So we've got a, right now, we're trying to figure out how to get the building up to speed with exhibits. And then what is the plan moving forward? So that we're not in the situation again where we're needing to figure out, how do we do a large improvement project? And be able to do this as we go. So that's, so at this point, we know that it's probably grossing six-hundred thousand. But again, most of that will be leaving the county and they don't pay rent.
So is this a good investment?
It'd be a good, our side.
It sounds like we're in a bad investment right now.
Would be a great investment. If you guys could get that gift shop, would be a great investment. I was just running numbers in my head and what.
Right.
Out of visitors you guys get.
Right.
I would team up with Indiana, the shirt spot.
Inco.
Do a lot of different things.
We're well aware.
Well, and it's a bookstore right now. And so there are things that they're not selling that the visitors are wanting. And so again, it would be trying to make sure the visitors are getting what they're looking for. And, you know, again, we want to look out for Porter County. We want to look out for our local national park. And so those are the, those are the discussions we are in. And, you know, the operations is on us. And so, you know, right now, Eastern National is not contributing to that. So that's.
Well, if, go on, you go ahead, Andy.
Does anybody track, or ask the people, their visitors there, what they're looking, what they would like to see in regards to be in the gift shop? Say it to floor running, so when it opens up.
You know, for example, you know, when you travel like spoons and the little shot glasses and stuff like that. I know that sounds like tchotchkes, but at the end of the day.
You sell.
When you do the research, that's what it is. And so they're more of a bookstore, so they're supposed to be more interpretive. And which we understand that. And certainly, the national park has identified, they can pick any other location, multiple locations within the national park. So they can be at West Beach, they can be at Mount Baldy. And we're certainly not here to hurt them. We want to help them be successful, but at the same time, we have a building to upkeep and.
I think it's a great idea. I looked at that and I was, that's a, that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Sylvia, what was your motion? Was it the two million, four-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-three?
You gonna go up here?
Yes.
Yes.
But I'd like one more question.
Oh, sure.
How did the maintenance agreements go up?
And it's just whatever you're hearing from everybody out there is everything's gone up. Our cleaning company's gone up, our snow removal. I mean, it's just, it's just the reality of life. We just got, just for windows, it's going up twenty percent. And that's after the increases that we've seen. So it's just, it's just across the board, Sylvia, that everything's just is increasing.
Well, we heard about, we all know about food, but we got the real shocker about food.
Is there a second on the floor? Anybody want a second?
Second.
The gift shop goes, hopefully, burning your heart to give to some Memorial Opera, the parks especially. So it's very important, so if you guys can make some money.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O same sign. I love Sylvia Graham mug.
Shot glass. Rivas Darb.
Alright, I think we're.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No. Thank you so much.
Alright.
Thank you.
See you here.
Recycling and waste reduction. Go crazy.
No changes. Move to approve?
Motion on the floor, second. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O same sign.
What? Their one-forty-four was.
Their one-forty-four was missing.
Yeah, here.
I think we're good, though.
Yeah.
Hold on a second.
Everything's the same.
See, these are all midpoint, everything's good, right? We're good?
Yeah.
Everything's good? We're in midpoint with everybody there?
Yep.
Alright, was there?
I have a special capital as well.
You have huh?
There was a special capital account as well?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. It's only up sixty-five thousand this year.
Why did I miss it?
We have ten, no, it's right next, it's the next one, right?
Oh, what, special? Ten thousand? Is that right?
We have ten thousand.
We get it, we get ten thousand.
Oh, nope, it should be allocated at sixty-five, that was what was submitted.
Six-five-hundred?
Nope, sixty-five thousand in our non-reverting capital.
What does it include?
The sixty-five thousand was for, or excuse me, I'm looking at thirteen thousand was for office equipment and a finance, excuse me, a study on finance and a land expansion study was allocated at fifty-two thousand.
Alright, well, this is different than what they have on the screen. Screen is showing, is that right? Fifty-eight thousand?
What is in your office, your other equipment?
Oh, okay. It was also in the letter that was submitted, filled out the one-forty-four.
So the one-forty-four, these are all the midpoint, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm wondering, because we don't have access to low, we had submitted it in the separate form as well attached.
What do you have in landscape?
Um, what was that? Let's see. The two line items, it would be under capital outlay. We had a forty-three-twenty was the improvement number for a study at fifty-two thousand. And then under machinery, a four-four-one-zero office equipment over one hundred, we requested thirteen thousand.
That one-forty-four is not right, just throw that away.
This one, this one I got my.
Yeah, that's not right, that's not right. So.
We got it now.
Yeah, we're fine. Is that the number sixty-five thousand?
That's what I thought.
Yep, we got it now.
I don't think there was any rate or.
And there'd be no problem with advertising on that?
Uh, I'll have to look.
Alright, we'll just pass it, see what, alright. Sixty-five thousand.
This, Jeremy, are we on the capital one?
Yes, nine-nine-nine-four.
I do have a question for the fifty-two thousand dollar study. What exactly, I'm just curious.
So what our board would, we had discussed is we had a very small study done. And then we talked about having a financial and expansive study done. It's been brought up several times, if the district would acquire a piece of property, possibly have a one centralized hub location for drop-off locations. It's been talked about and expansive stuff in our board. So in order to further that, we just had a very minor selective study done to follow through. We need to just make it more expansive to follow through with the financials, what can happen and where we can go in the direction from it.
How would you get there if you found a piece of property? What is, how do you raise the fees?
Well, that will all be discussed in the study. That's what we're trying to look at exactly, like how would it happen? How would we address our user fee on a whole nother level? Hasn't been addressed in twenty-fifteen, so, yeah.
Saturday with the drop-off.
Yes, absolutely, I'm glad you brought it up. So it's a reminder, our household hazardous waste on Saturday. The only charge that we do, that we also have our tire collection. So if residents have more than four tires, let's say they bring us a carload of them, we charge like three dollars. Three dollars, five dollars. If you have a tractor tire, it's about fifteen, so.
With this study, you're looking to see where you can actually services together?
Absolutely, potentially have a, what we would love to see is a hub. So more things could be recycled, more things could be dropped off. Household, instead of having six mobile household hazardous waste events through an entire year, we could have a site in a location all year where in residence, like, so I'm encouraging you to tell your constituents, because from this point in October till May, you have to hold your household hazardous waste because we don't have another event until May. So having a site and expansive study, all of Porter County residents could potentially maybe drop it off at one central location, maybe.
No, I get it, I was just wondering if the fees would have to be raised, because I'm looking at.
Of course, it would, it would be totally addressed. That's why, nothing, the fees have not been raised because we want to see where we can go and what we can do.
But it's, it's like, again, I know it's.
Yep, totally preliminary.
Attorney McClure, you here with us today?
Yes, sir.
I just, can you attempt to answer a question for me?
Sure.
I know this body mostly is statutorily empowered to raise fees and taxes. Would this be one that would come under us or no? Could they actually raise it by themselves?
It would be up to their board.
Their board can go out and raise taxes on.
The county as a whole, if that board is represented by the council.
Correct, our leadership is seven elected officials, all three county commissioners. We have representation from the county council, the largest populated mayor, or excuse me, largest populated city, which is currently the city of Portage, fiscal responsibility from Portage and an at-large, which currently is the city of Valparaiso. So we have a seven-member board of elected officials.
I'm on that board.
Hey, did you hear what's going?
Well, she, and you know my opinion on raising taxes. It's not.
A longstanding.
And it is a user fee, so just, and I know that is still, has to be paid, but it is called a user fee, so correct, yeah.
We have, like I said, I.
Yeah, absolutely.
Six people making between eighty-five and fifty-five thousand. And then, you know, you have eight-hundred thousand in contractual, which I would imagine would be your people taking in all the recycling.
Recycling hazardous waste material, electronics waste, grinding of the yard. We also manage all of the compost sites in Porter County, so that is your grinding of your yard waste and brush, so, yeah.
Great program, just saying, it's good.
It's very expensive and it keeps going up.
Thousands to support eight-hundred thousand contractual, that's right, kinda.
Unfortunately, as prices keep increasing horrifically, so.
Especially train the people you're doing contractual for this hazardous work.
Yeah, absolutely. So for the hazardous waste, my staff isn't even trained to handle it. We hire a contract, we're contracted with a company who comes out from East Chicago and they come out and handle all the hazardous waste. So.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
So there's a number in front of you. I don't think there's a motion of sixty-five thousand. Not sure we can do it, but entertain a motion for that. There's no motion to approve this budget?
Motion to approve the sixty-five thousand study and the mentioned other items.
Motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
Second, discussion, further?
I just want to point out that we've been talking for years.
Agreed.
About this study. So it's something that the board has been grappling, that they don't know for certain.
I just think fifty-two thousand's a lot of money for a study. I know, I know, that's all. All in favor, the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O same sign.
Aye.
How many knows?
I don't know, could we get a roll call, please, for that vote?
Hey, Mr. Stone.
No.
Your vasco's?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Poseck?
No.
Mr. Bruckner?
No.
Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
No.
Oh, fails.
So.
Three-four, three-four.
Um.
I'd make a motion to approve the ten thousand.
I second that motion. It's a motion on the floor to approve this budget at ten thousand dollars, second, further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Can I ask, what is the line item of ten thousand?
Other mobile.
Line, other mobile equipment, I believe, right?
That's what it.
Okay.
I'm guessing you're gonna.
I, I don't know what that was submitted, that's why I'm just inquiring, thank you.
Come back in front of us maybe next year and sell us a little bit more on what we do.
Okay, will do, our board had already approved it, so thank you.
Have a great night, hope to see you Saturday.
Thank you.
Please bring us sunshine.
Clerk, animal fund, be always.
Sorry.
Jeremy's always sunshine, right Jeremy? What? Not that I said, you're always sunshine. This, this board brings all kinds of sunshine, you're always great. Clerk. Animal fund. Hello. How are you? Is it increase of forty-three thousand dollars, uh, some midpoint, I'm guessing on there in salaries? Some other increases, a decrease in hourly, the number's one hundred, one million four hundred and seventy-two thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Motion to approve.
Three thousand, dollars motion? Second. Second, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Clerk, perpetuation, awesome place.
Just be curiosity, the hourly, second time around, if you get a five thousand dollar decrease, you lose somebody, or.
We, uh, for perpetuation, we're utilizing volunteers in the archiving department, but we don't need as many.
Just curious, thank you.
Number's two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and five?
Motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Second, with a little laughter from the audience. Um, not sure where we're directed, but all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. We got elected officials trained, we gotta approve that, yep. Training that split up.
Move to approve.
Two thousand motion?
Second.
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 All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, clerk forty, it's like there's a slight increase. Eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, an increase of one thousand four hundred and ninety-seven.
Is that midpoint for salaries? Move to approve.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, board of elections and registration, animal fund.
Have you filled the open role in that board?
Um, potentially, it goes to a board vote on the twenty-sixth.
Cool.
Eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty, increase of nearly two hundred thousand, I'm gonna guess that's gonna be election stuff this year?
This is more the same as the twenty-twenty last election budget.
The salaries is just, uh, midpoint.
Is midpoint, everything else is due to elections this year.
Motion to approve.
Motion, was there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Elections are expensive.
Are you done, are you done?
I think I'm done.
You?
Thank you.
We already did Wes Porter. Yeah, Wes Porter's done auditor, do you guys wanna just wait to the end?
I don't know, we might have good news for you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, she's saving us money.
If you're saving us money, come on down.
I know. She's gonna be like, gotcha. Good money.
Oh, we did.
Yeah, sure.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, don't forget that.
Okay, just to let you know what's going on in the auditor's office, we have about four or five projects finished this year, staying within our budgets. Um, we took care of almost eight years of destruction, which what happened was facilities contacted us and a lot of our, um, paperwork was downstairs in the health department. And the health department could not expand until we moved and take, took care of that. So, that was done primarily by me. We also have taken care of the plat books that we are now scanning, the money that's being used for that is the ARPA money, that means all those old books are now being scanned. And anytime you can come into the office, the gentlemen are doing it at the office, you wanna see that's going on. Um, we have a couple of other projects that are finalizing, um, we've gone to paperless claims, so we no longer have to have the claims kept. Uh, that was only at a cost of two thousand dollars, so that we could put it into the cloud. Um, the next process is we are hiring a company that you have approved the funding for, to have the exemptions checked. Homestead exemptions and things of that sort, to make sure people are getting the correct exemptions. Um, we've hired a company, all we need to do is transfer the data and what we'll do inquiries, and then bring those all up and we'll have a better, instead of a, a reactive response to individuals that come to the counter, we will have a proactive and start reviewing this on a regular basis. Uh, one of the last projects that we're working on would be with reference to looking at our G I, V I S system. And that's what we're doing right now, is making some changes, we're moving twenty-eight thousand two seventy-nine from the general fund, and moving it over to the auditor plat map fund. So there'll be a reduction there, and then that'll reduce hourly by nine hundred dollars. So that will then bring us lower than our twenty-twenty-three budget. We are also looking at, of course, that would increase, the FICA and the PERF will then want, not have to be taken out of the commissioner's budget, so that will reduce that budget general also, and bring it over to our plat map. So with the very first budget coming out of the general fund, uh, the total will now be eight ninety-one, nine eighty-six, instead of nine twenty-one, one sixty-five like this year.
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
Does this have raises in it right now?
Yes.
That's to mid.
These include points.
These are midpoint, right?
Yes.
Here, oh, we got it.
Move someone from our general fund budget to our.
Okay. There it.
Where does the money for the plat map budget come from?
From fees.
Oh, cool.
Is there a motion to second at the eight-nine-one-nine-eight-six?
It says fee-based, I missed that.
Motion second, favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, G I S mapping.
As he asked, this is a fee-based, it does not come out of the general fund, it is increasing due to the fact that we're moving an individual over there and going to be covering our, covering our own FICA and PERF.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign at the one-one-nine-nine-eight-seven. Auditor non-reverting twelve sixteen.
Okay, what's happening here is what we do is we take part of our, um, salaries out of the general fund, and then we take amounts out of the, um, non-reverting fund to compensate. And the FICA, um, the medical life insurance comes out of there as well as the PERF. The only thing I did have a question about, Ryan, is when you took it to midpoint, did you take these amounts into consideration? Okay, just for clarification purposes.
Uh, what did you ask, I'm sorry?
Well, the amounts that, see that, some of the salaries get money from this plus the general, and I wanted to make sure that they were at midpoint and not exceeded it.
Thank you. Do, uh, motion to approve?
Motion, second, second, and three hundred, one thousand and four dollars. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, the elected officials training, that's part of the.
Move to approve.
Second, thousand, motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, what do we got, what else do you gotta approve, um? Debt fund to zero?
So far, so right now.
So far, right now.
Good or bad, but second.
Second.
So this is the one that's retiring?
Okay.
We want the new fund.
Okay, I was gonna ask, we have.
Right.
Alright, there's motion to second for zero on the fund, forty-six hundred, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Insurance.
Health insurance, forty-seven hundred. Twelve million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
It's only five hundred and seventy-five thousand, half million over last year's.
Man, that's a lot of money.
Well, it is.
I know what you're saying.
Nineteen thousand five-five-one, it went almost, up almost three hundred dollars per person, because last year's was two forty-six or three forty-six, yeah. So you're talking about three hundred dollars per employee, we have about eight hundred employees, not all of them are full-time now, but insurance. And take that into consideration when you're looking at the auditors department, we have a total of fourteen employees, we process every claim for the whole county, we also do payroll for the whole county. We do all the deduction, the exemptions, as well as filings, and with a staff of fourteen, they're excellent, I couldn't ask for better. Even those two sitting over there.
Let the jury show that she pointed. Uh, make a motion to approve insurance fund.
Second.
At twelve-five-seventy-five.
Or I don't, I just don't, I don't remember passing before, I know it says administrative, but doesn't mean we haven't, so.
It's new.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Same, twelve million dollars for insurance, twelve million five hundred and.
Is that for the, the whole county?
Yeah.
Thought that was.
It, it's an administrative fund, that's where they're all gonna go.
Okay.
And we're actually doing pretty good on that this year, correct?
We're doing well this year, yes, we are.
I thought Baker Tilly thought we were gonna.
You better be knocking on wood.
So, um. All depends. Orifice your pass fund, four-nine-two-eight.
Move to approve.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, this is where we pay all the, I think, the other.
Second.
Qualities, um, motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That's it.
That would be it.
Thank you guys for returning some money, appreciate it.
Alright, what do we got, animal shelter, general fund. Five, up, seven thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars, five hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and.
Second.
Motion second.
Just to confirm, these are midpoints? We just gotta confirm it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Same sign, animal shelter fee.
Move to approve.
Seven, one hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and three, motion second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, animal shelter supplemental, four-zero-zero-eight.
Move to approve.
Second.
Twenty, down to twenty-two thousand dollars, motion second.
Yeah, what?
Right, all in favor.
Well, hold on, that's right, that's right.
That is.
Allow me to discuss, man.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Same. Cause you've had your allotment of questions tonight. He said no more questions. Alright, where we at, animal control fee? Make a motion we approve. Sixty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-seven, motion second, all, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, animal shelter donation, two hundred and ninety thousand, four-one-zero-one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. They kinda help you. Thank you. Appreciate it, good night. Get you through. Waits and measures, not sure. He went down twenty-two months. We're gonna have some issues on this one, yeah. Twenty-two dollar.
Moved, moved to approve. Those are midpoint increases?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Or increase, I should say, there's only one guy on your budget.
Motion to second at eighty-six thousand three hundred and six dollars. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. It was worth the wait, wasn't it?
Yeah. Thank you for returning twenty-two dollars.
I T, hey, where's Expo, Expo, do Expo before we do Expo Center.
She's not here.
She's running late, we'll, we'll push her, we'll push her around, I think she, uh, might've said she was seven-thirty or something, maybe, I thought I saw. Yeah, if I remember, I thought, yeah, alright, I T.
Go to I T?
Skip over, I know she sent something, yeah, so, coming out of the back room like, like WWE or something, you know?
Hulk Hogan over here?
Oh.
Music. It was a little freaky, um, general fund, one point six, one, one million six hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-one, there's an increase of three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, what's that increase, talk about this?
Part of it's midpoint, and then he's asking for an additional four hundred and five thousand in data process equipment to start making.
Yeah, right now, the budget we have gets us through every year, but we're unable to replace aging equipment, and if we don't start replacing that equipment soon, we're gonna have the whole telephone debacle all over again with different equipment.
Were all those qualities midpoint?
Yes.
Couple of years back, didn't we replace all of the, uh, we spent a lot of money replacing some of the equipment, didn't we?
We probably did, but, uh, sheriff's department, all of their equipment is very old, it needs to be swapped out.
Okay, it's old, but is that gonna be included in the bond? The thing of it is, I don't wanna, want us to replace the equipment, and then once the bond goes through and they do all of that structuring out there, then they, we get brand-new equipment again.
Why you're so, that's why you're here still, I mean, you're, you're smart, stuff like that, and I think the sheriff did mention something like that, but there's others discussions I wanna talk to the commissioners about, um, you know, that, something that we've talked about a little bit, about maybe creating another fund. We've got some increase in revenue right now that we kinda wanna ignore for a little while, there's been discussions about maybe using that for like I T and safety, like capital upgrades. So, um, we understand, and, what about, Lee, the, um, the judges, about that upgrade, is that part of this too?
No, that's not included.
How are we gonna pay for that?
I do not know that, I'm.
When are you gonna ask for that?
I've been, I have to meet with the attorney yet.
What was the dollar amount? I thought it was three hundred some thousand, I don't know.
Um, I've got it less than that.
I thought it was a couple hundred.
Yeah, it's, it's just shy of two hundred.
Can I ask where we came up with this odd number, five-eight-two-three-oh-five, is there a plan that we haven't seen?
Five-eight-two.
Five-eight.
For data processing equipment, an increase of three ninety-two, one twenty-four, again, an odd number. Well, it seems like very exact, are you?
I, no, I submitted four hundred thousand.
Instead of five-eight-two?
Why did we get five-eighty?
Five-eight-two would've been the increase over our current, I asked for four hundred additional.
Looks like they're maybe messing with adjustments or something in there, um, is that what you guys?
So this includes all the departments that you're looking at?
Yes, yeah, this is just to slowly create a five, five-year plan, so we can start maintaining our equipment.
Yeah, well, I'd like to see, you said there's a plan, I'd like to see the plan, I mean, who's getting what, and what, where is this money gonna go specifically?
And I can do that, I, when I.
Replacement plan.
And I get that, when I submitted this, I believe you all have a copy, I gave you three, um, not invoices, like quotes on equipment that's desperately needed already, which exceeds the four hundred thousand.
Yeah, well, I guess what I'm looking at, me personally, I don't know, but my colleagues is, where is this money gonna go? You know, uh, we're gonna have a replacement plan, we have a lot of departments in the county, which departments are gonna get what, that's a plan.
Sure.
And I haven't seen, with, I saw the quote.
And along with the plan, you have to understand that I may plan to replace something at the sheriff's department and something in Portage fails, so that screws the plan already.
At least have some kind of a guide.
Sure.
You know, uh, to where, you know, this three hundred and some thousand dollars, how it's gonna be spent. Um, I mean, that's just something, um, that, I mean, again, we're talking about taxpayer money and, you know, and we know things.
Like I said, I'm concerned, we're, have the whole.
There's this money gonna.
Telephone situation again with other services, and it could be a server that brings down the county. I'm not talking doomsday, I'm just being realistic, that we have to look at replacement.
I agree, and that's why, you know, we've begun some discussions, because we're gonna find ourselves, yeah, in some trouble real shortly here, because technology moves so fast, and this, yeah.
I mean, is this gonna be an, maybe an annual cost?
It would, it would.
Anticipate.
I, I am looking for an annual.
Yeah.
Raise, yeah.
So.
Wow.
If you would, if you would humor us for another week and a half, maybe, or maybe in, um, and take that entire amount out.
The entire amount?
The entire amount, well, I mean, do you, is there things out of there that you need to like?
He had ninety in there.
Maybe just take out the increase that he, he would ask for, that's probably a good idea, take out the, um. Yes, yes, that's fair, cause I don't want him to be completely without anything, and if we get caught wrestling around, because I, I think that we really gotta create some type of fund for I T upgrades, capital upgrades, you know? And, and to me, there's no better, you know, to, to kinda ignore that increase that we're getting from the treasurer right now is, you know, maybe move that into some type of I T capital, you know, fund for a couple of years to make certain.
Kinda build it up a little bit and then.
Maybe to give, maybe, to give you that money to spend on your five-year plan.
Sure.
After a couple of years, if we're getting two million plus extra a year, I mean, we might be able to, to afford that five-year capital plan, to build it up for two years, so, we got, get with the commissioners to see how, you know, they maybe can create this, um, this fund, and we'd have to build a budget underneath it, but, um.
Only thing, the treasurer says she never knows for sure if that's gonna be.
Well, that's why using it for capital for a couple of years would be.
Yeah, it'd be a one-time.
Yeah.
But I would agree with, uh, Councilmember Brickner.
Yes.
I'd like to see a plan.
Yes.
I'd like to understand what we're talking about fixing, how urgent is it, what could happen, you know, if it went down tomorrow, if you lost a server, it's not backed up on a cloud? You know, to me, that maybe, that's scary, that's scary, cause I know if a server goes down, there's usually a backup server, so that's kinda information we'll need to understand.
Sure.
So in the meantime, I, I think there, it's a, it's a good, good question, cause, you know, if we're looking at building up some capital for you.
Alright.
Maybe we can have a plan that lays out the next couple of years.
Sure.
Starting with the most immediate things that you're aware of, and then what you might know's coming, so. Uh, and we've gotta figure out with the judges here too, that when, when's that coming, the bill, I mean, have you?
I hope to meet with Scott, hopefully next week.
What are you guys talking about? Audio equipment in the judges' chambers, I believe?
Yeah, there's.
Rumor out there.
I think they have to have it by stat, by.
By statute, there's a title that says they have to have it by January first.
Yeah, so.
We still have ARPA money available for that?
We have about six hundred thousand or something like. Yeah, yeah, we just, we just budget, we just spent, allocated a hundred and fifty for the park, if you remember, so, and I think we had.
Oh, that's right.
Left behind.
Have a plan, there's some.
Five hundred thousand, so that I think there's, to Scott, there's three hundred and fifty thousand that we really haven't, nobody's spoken for yet, so.
There is a possibility also that there might be some left over from the auditors fund, or ARPA money, depending on what the plat, the plat scanning cost.
Oh, cool. You're full of all kinda good news.
My job.
Maybe you should've led this whole thing off last week.
Why didn't you put me on the last night?
Yeah.
So. Good note, the prosecutors were talking about those colored copies, remember, and how he was paying an outside source, I had talked to Lee, and he said that he would be able to assist him in that, remember there was a, a.
Yeah.
That he was paying, taking his copies, so for trials.
Right.
Oh, cool, he's gonna.
And Lee had discussed that, we're also doing a couple of asset inventory right now, and, uh, I T S was one of them, the sheriff's department, um, soil and water, or, the, um, and then we've got, um, there's, um, oh, highway. Department, so we'll be able to give you numbers on that and what we have within those assets, as soon as they get compiled together.
Perfect, so just, yeah, I, I mean, we hear you, we're not, we're not taking that money away, we understand, I. Perfect. So, just, yeah, I mean, we hear you. We're not, we're not taking that money away. We understand, I, you know, technology, we, and we've been discussing that. We've gotta fund it over the next couple of years, some big capital, I'm sure of it, well, probably really every year, but make sure you stay close with the Commissioners on the judges' chamber.
Right.
That first one, and then I would start building a plan out while we figure out with the Commissioners about creating, um, this new fund that they'll probably have to do by ordinance, so. Alright, we removed that four hundred thousand dollars, so the number's one hundred, one million, two hundred and sixty...
Motion to approve.
Second. Second. Further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. All the same sign.
Thank you.
Stay tuned. Memorial Opera House. Four-nine-one-five. So...
You guys good? Megan, our new director has a sick...
Or... Seriously?
Seriously.
I didn't know that was coming. Get to meet the new director?
No, you don't even get to meet the new director.
So, what's the number? Five-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-nine? Difference of nine thousand and one dollar. Andy, ask about why a one-dollar difference? Just...
Yeah, why one dol...
No, seriously. There a motion a second?
Yes.
I make a motion.
Second. Discussion?
I, I do have a question though. Why is perf going up nine thousand, one hundred and eighty? It's, it might not be a question for you, for the... But, why a nine-thousand-dollar increase on perf if only hourly's going up and not that much? Yeah, perf.
Yeah, it's going from what, eighteen to twenty-seven?
Doubling basically.
You get rid of that number, we are now saving money.
Taking...
Except itself on it.
For their own insurance either.
Okay. I didn't know that.
It's fee-based, and we try to get the fee-based departments to cover that.
So, can we take the perf down?
Yep, I just did.
Okay.
Five-fourty-five, three-sixteens.
I will let you know that they're probably gonna be short on hourly, um, next year, but we also are taking some, uh, they might not be, because we are removing the summer show and doing construction, so I take that back. We'll probably be okay.
So, the new number would be five-fourty-five, three-sixteen?
Five hundred...
Who made that motion?
I'll make the motion. We approve five-fourty-five, three-sixteen.
Second.
So, motion in a second for five-hundred-and-forty-five, thousand, three-hundred-and-sixteen. For a new number. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Um, there's a Memorial Opera House grant, eight-three-hundred.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Nine thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty. Motion second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Um, so, yeah. Is this, you doing the ARPA COVID fiscal recovery?
Yeah. It, that, it's eighty-nine-ten, not eighty-nine-oh-eight, um, but it, they're both.
The SFOG, the M O H SFOG. That's what it stands for. Going down.
So, what are we doing here? Yeah, um... What is this fund? Yeah, eight-nine?
Eighty-nine-ten, not eighty-nine-oh-eight. ARPA, we're doing at the very end there. Eighty-nine-oh-eight's the big ARPA fund.
Why is this fund, what is this fund for?
I think, I think we just had it labeled in there as eighty-nine-oh-eight, but it should have been eighty-nine-ten. That's the only other ARPA fund.
So, we're doing eighty-nine-ten?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve eighty-nine-ten, M O H SFOG, at a ten thousand, six ninety-seven savings.
One second.
But it's a grant, so it's not a savings.
You just like saying that.
SFOG. We have it as eighty-nine-ten. It just says ARPA COVID.
Yeah, so I'm confused about what this is, though. Three-hundred-and-forty-two.
Yeah.
It's a grant?
Remember, they got a grant, um, last year to, that replaced, um, losses that they had.
Alright.
I think it was in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand.
Okay. Alright, gotcha. Was motion a second?
Yes.
All in favor of the three-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-four? Signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Alright.
Thanks, guys.
I just got a question for this. Does include the, the hundred thousand that they asked for, right, this year? And we got an email that they're looking for a hundred thousand during construction?
I think she said they don't need...
No, that's...
No, that's not included. That's not included. I'm not saying I don't think they're gonna need...
No, I, I...
When the budget was turned...
I gotcha. It was, I gotcha. Yeah, if there's an issue why we're, I mean, we...
We're probably absolutely gonna need that.
Do it, I mean, yeah.
Tried getting money for... Can I ask why? I don't understand why we would need that.
You what? I didn't...
Because they're gonna lose revenue.
Right, but there's people, the people aren't working then, right?
So, you wanna lay them off?
They can't pay them for not working, right?
Well, we were, we're planning to find other places for them to do things, kinda like we did during COVID.
Which is awesome. That's what I was expecting. Can't we pay them under their budgets?
Under other budgets?
Well, they're doing work for the other department.
We'll have to see. We'll work, we'll do the best.
I'm just asking. I don't know. I've never been in that situation where we're doing...
But they're not asking for that hundred thousand, right?
Not, not.
Not at this moment, but we will be. We will be, cuz I, I mean, there's usually a two or three concerts, show revenue. I mean, there's, that's a big loss.
There are some of these.
We have three full-time people.
That are paying, do a lot of...
Yeah, paying, I mean, we'll find stuff for them to do. We're not gonna let them sit around and collect a paycheck. They won't want to.
Yep, yep, yep. Alright, thank...
That all you need?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Expo. Let's, yeah.
Oh, she's here.
Expo in the house.
Oh, I can't go backward.
Oh, there it is. Expo, yep. Down. I, I figured, cuz it's class, it's six-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, six-hundred and eighty-nine. Expo, four-zero-zero-five.
Oh, one second, Jim, I'm getting to it.
How did you say you were gonna be here?
Second.
When the party got over.
Party got over?
It's not over. I felt comfortable leaving.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Second?
Yes.
Thirty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-nine, all in favor.
Well, I just got a question. How are you saying power's going down? Cuz I, I mean, I thought power was more expensive now. Why is it going down three thousand?
Um, with the new equipment, it's going down. With the remodel.
Oh.
More efficient.
Oh, cool. Thank you. That's all you have.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. It was easy. Airport. Great movie. Yeah, yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening. Airport. One million, five-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars.
This is one of the binding review budgets for the council.
The what?
This is one of the binding review budgets. We're outside the general fund, and by statute, you review our budgets.
What in kinda, I know normally you build increase then expecting some kind of increase. What did you do?
We, we actually, the high points for the operational budget, uh, we programmed five percent contingency, because in the binding review, the board cannot raise our budget. They can approve or lower. We had a minor change to the cost of our health insurance that we participate with the county, so there's an increase there. We're seeing a decrease of fifteen hundred dollars in longevity due to a retirement. Uh, but the board did want me to request consideration of two line items that in real numbers have been kinda out of bounds in the budgets the last three to four years. Uh, one is our gas, fuel, and lubrication, twenty-two-ten. We're asking for an additional five-thousand-dollar consideration there. We're spent right now through September thirtieth, seventy-two-hundred dollars. Still have to get our winter blend for winter operations. And then the big-ticket item is insurance that, with a very hard market over the last few years, with the crashes of the Q-737s and a loss of a, a number of aircraft down in Nashville, with a tornado that went through there, it made our airport liability a very hard market, and we've actually seen a significant in, increase. The, uh, real number we have for this year is sixty-one thousand, um, five-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. So, we'd like to try to adjust that, because that one's kinda getting out of bounds as to the actual budget number.
And the raises up top, what was?
We, we don't know. We have not seen the midpoints or the stipend information yet, but we programmed it like we normally do with a five percent contingency.
So, what are those, Ryan?
These are not midpoints.
Take them out for now. Then whatever we do. Kind of, it's always forced you along the same path, right?
Yeah.
I have a...
It's usually the third hearing when we find those out, so it's fine.
Jeremy asked earlier, someone asked earlier, how, how we raised the tax on recycling. How do you raise taxes on airports? Is that us or you that...
We, we actually are a taxing district. Our taxing district is the county, um, and our total tax rate is less than one cent. This year would be point zero-zero-eight-eight per hundred dollars assessed.
So, if we approved a budget that was twice as large as this year, would we be effectively raising?
It, it would be, uh, uh, you know, as far as the tax rate would modify. Matter of fact, this year, it actually went down a very small amount due to the increased assessed valuation, but yeah, it's...
I'm just curious how it worked. Thank you.
It, it is. It's a taxing district.
So...
So, you're saying it went down?
It, it, our rate actually went down point zero-zero-zero-one because of the increase in assessed value. Even, even with the, um, increases that we had, we're below the four percent state growth quotient.
I'd make a motion to approve the one million, five-twenty-seven, five-twenty-seven.
Second.
Which is everything minus your salaries.
Thank you.
Motion second on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Airport.
That is the same last year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-five. Motion second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. So, you got a cash balance? You got a reserve of six million, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand?
Where are we getting that?
That's the general fund.
Oh.
I, I wish.
I thought Jeremy...
I was looking at, well, usually that's what they put up.
Can I?
Yeah, I was gonna say, come on now. Keep talking about this tax rate thing. What is that?
That's the general fund.
I think he's pulling it up for the Commissioners, right?
Yeah. Alright, alright, we're good.
He's ahead of us.
Alright, I'll see you next time I come out and work on my plane.
Very good.
I don't have a...
I know, but I'm, I'm hopeful.
Good evening. I just wanna come over there and fly.
Power flies, so. I thought the same thing, Jeremy. Yeah. They've been pulling them up the same way. Airport, um, Airport, Cume, Commissioners. Alright. Commissioners, any of you guys got a plane?
Not yet.
Not yet?
He's like, only a helicopter.
Yeah. What was the, Jim, you were probably a Commissioner back then when they created all this stuff?
What, helicopters?
No. Like they, like, most, like, a lot of airports are county airports, aren't they? Like...
Yeah, most of them are.
On the system, you know? Why?
Yeah, they created that way before the nineties, when I was in, first time, yeah.
So...
We, we have one of the best-run airports in the county.
In the county?
Did I say the county?
Yeah, we only got two, right?
Well, that's a true statement, right? I'll take it.
We're off and running.
Yeah.
Alright, so, the general fund. What is it? It's up, it's down?
Salary.
Down thirty thousand, seven hundred, thirty thousand, thirty thousand, seven hundred, sixteen dollars. Salaries are up, but the salaries are midpoints. Is that correct?
Might.
What?
What's your number on the general fund?
Ten. Well, he ran off with it. Ten million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-two.
Okay.
Is that it?
That, that would...
Say okay. It was, it was one of your tricky okay's, like, yeah, we'll go with that.
It was. I'm assuming that the midpoint raises is what I don't have here, so there's a difference with the count.
Gotta watch Scott. He's, he's an attorney. I don't have Harold here to defend us.
I know, right? It's worse.
So... What's, any, any questions? Medical, life insurance up, twenty-three thousand. Training?
Travel.
The, the changes were training and ed, travel, telephone and internet, official bonds, equipment rentals. That's where the movement happened. Thirty-seven-one-hundred is where, uh, we reduced that from ten thousand to zero. We were, uh, the bonds went from forty-seven ninety-five to eight thousand. Five thousand was added to telephone and internet. Travel went from a thousand to three thousand, and training and ed went from three thousand to six thousand. Those are the changes as proposed in the general fund without the midpoint raise.
So, a hundred thousand dollars postage. I mean, certainly...
Especially with election year next year.
We have that in another budget also.
Oh.
So, you moved that over?
There's, there's another budget down the road that has additional post in it, specifically for the additional needed anyway, and for the upcoming election.
Probably somewhere where I was, had my eye on for the last couple of weeks, I'm certain.
Probably, unfortunately.
Alright, so... Anybody got any question?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion a couple seconds. Further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Lit. What?
Twelve-thirty-three.
Another general fund. I think they did all the Commissioners' general funds in one...
Oh, I see it now.
That, that's why we were using the big number of ten million, nine something. Okay? That makes sense?
Oh, we...
Alright, so we have general fund jail, which is a sub-part of our general fund, but it's the fed prisoner money.
Yeah, we, we're...
That's what we did.
That's...
But that would have been included in this ten number.
No, you've got thirty-five hundred, which is power, that you, if we don't have it, the one thousand, one thousand, that's over to the twelve-thirty-three.
I don't...
You had a zero in sewage. Those were moved over to one of the...
Okay. So, you, we're at jail, we're at, uh, the Commissioners' general fund that represents federal prisoner money. And these are the lines, and this is the money spent at the jail.
So, three-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Correct.
Well, why did you think that that was encompassed in a number?
I did not get to the last page. The real number was eleven-two-thirty-six-eighty-one, plus the midpoint raises would be the real number.
It'd be back here? Oh, it's back here.
Alright, with twelve-thirty-three.
Eric, no.
Inside the general, I...
Commissioner, I don't, one, two, two, three, just look this up a little bit. Right behind that tab.
Are you looking for twelve-thirty-three?
Yeah.
It should say federal prisoners.
It's its own tab. It says Commissioners, one, two, three, three, general fund. It's right behind that.
Oh, there it is. This is...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
The jail also, I, it's not their sheriff, is it? The other portion, so. Motion a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Where are we at? Lit?
Lit. Seat it.
Yep, no problem.
Seat it.
Gotcha. Lit, so... Highway, is this yours?
No, that's yours.
Turnover, alright. No, no, no. What's the bottom?
I think right now, according to what, and again, this may not have the midpoint raises in it. Uh, s, I believe with the requested budget was six million, eight-hundred-and-forty-nine, three-hundred-and-forty-five.
Yeah.
And just for point of reference, I think, um, according to our numbers from the auditor, we're projected to get six million, six-sixty-four, oh-five-nine this year in, um, lit, total lit revenue for, for the Porter County government specifically.
So, what, where's the one hundred and sixteen thousand dollar increase that you guys put in here?
It's in Commissioners, it's Object eighteen, it's the Commissioners' lit. I'm not sure how they have it up there, but it would be a hundred thousand.
So, that's remove the postage?
A hundred thousand of additional postage there. And, uh, there was an increase in the election portion of this, or the way we deal with the, so, under maintenance, thirty-six-one-hundred maintenance agreements, it went from one-twenty-six, one-sixty. That's election-related increase due to the additional license that needed to be added. So, there's the, I believe, the bulk total of the additionals within lit.
Why is there two thirty-six-one-hundred maintenance agreements?
Because the lits are actually broke up into one, two, quite a few, three, four, four different lits.
A way to keep it confusing.
No, this is the way to...
No. Oh, it made it less confusing.
So, within election. In election, there's maintenance agreements. In election, there's maintenance agreements, and that's just for the election equipment. And then within our facilities lit, there's maintenance agreement that's just facility.
Thank you.
And you all know where it's going then also.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Thirty nine five hundred, it's contractual service, and it's just for, is that just for this year, the twenty five thousand?
There's a four sixty eight seventy nine, seven eighty nine, and a twenty five thousand right underneath it.
Was it there last year? I'm thinking it's because of the election or something.
I don't know, what, what line item are you?
It's right under, right here.
Three nine five hundred, there's two of them.
Three of them?
There's three.
Oh, there's three.
There's thirty seven nine hundred in contractual service in the election portion. In the election, in the contractual service are thirty nine fifty.
The twenty five, I guess.
Is what did you say, Commissioner?
Ah, there it is. And again, that's so we can track that that's what he's purchasing with.
Uh, the thirty seven nine hundred zeroed out, do you know that?
Yeah, it went down to zero.
On ours, it was, on the requested budget for ours was two ten three forty eight. For longevity. Longevity was put in. Well, I'm looking at longevity under the election portion right now. I don't know if it was in another place and.
Well, see, on the screen right now, that's what I'm talking about. It goes from thirty seven nine hundred to zero. I just wanna make sure that you guys knew that. I don't want you surprised, 'cause I thought you mentioned that number. But I can't tell you what subgroup that's from.
I believe that was, that was in the election subgroup, and I believe that is supposed to be zero. I think what that was in twenty three was an additional to that line, and it wasn't meant to carry over into twenty four.
Awesome.
So that should be zero.
That's all I have. I like the zero.
My understanding on the postage income, about fifty or sixty thousand of that is projected what we need in a normal year, and the other forty to fifty is for the election year.
Um, so, yeah, you kinda really burst in my bubble. But I, I mentioned it to Red, and I know he talked to Commissioner Biggs a little bit, and Scott, I mentioned it to you before the meeting. You know, we're, we've definitely, the increased costs, especially the jail, I mean, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna pick on the sheriff at all. Like I said Tuesday, I think he's got a warrant out for my arrest after first, after his second reading, you know, feel well. Uh, so. I mean, just, there was a lot of increases, right, and. So my, my hope was, you know, lit, you know, people are working. The last couple of years, it would go up a little bit. We could capture some of that maybe stuff from the jail over. I think it's gonna be the same thing when we hit CCD, you know, I was just looking for a relief valve, you know?
I, I think lit might not be the place to look. I mean, we've, we've ran probably at least three budget cycles, a little.
Yeah.
Heavier than what we were bringing in, and I think we've tapped the unallocated reserve at least a couple times in my recent memory. And this one, and that's why I was happy that we were gonna be within about two or three hundred thousand of budgeted compared to what we were bringing in. Still running low, um, as far as that. This one, I think, would be difficult to put anything in without starting to upset the apple cart down the road. If we're gonna, if we're gonna be in the situation you're describing, I, I think we would need to maybe look at either cable franchise or, or CCD.
That was the other two, yeah. I was hoping lit and then.
Because I, I don't know what the unallocated portion of lit is right now, but my guesstimate's about a million and a half.
It's only one, but that's not to finish out the rest of the year, it'll be right around there.
Right about there?
It, it's one million right now. It should be about a million and a half once we get the last two months in.
So.
Allocated or unallocated?
Unallocated, and we like to try to keep that around two because that's one of our emergency locations besides the general fund.
What, yeah, and we just approved that money for the architects out of there. That was like three.
But we were gonna pay it back.
That'll go back.
Right.
Eventually.
So that's why I'm, I don't know CCD or cable franchises, unallocated balances, and we can get in that till when we get there, but I think lit's a little worn out right at the moment, in all honesty.
Alright, no, I, I think we'll, after we get through today, I think we're gonna have to, you know, huddle back up and, you know, look at some spots to see if we can move some of those increased costs and, you know, operating the jail and some of the sheriff, you know, and I mentioned it to you, well, Commissioner Biggs and Blaney. There was like three hundred some thousand dollars in contractual. I thought he mentioned Motorola. I thought he mentioned maybe tasers. Yeah.
About the cars.
Vehicles were a hundred.
Yes.
Vehicles.
Well, there was a couple. Food went up, vehicles was another. Yeah, there were some big ticket items, so, um, you know, my hope was to, yeah, have a discussion, but I know you guys don't know. I, I, we glanced at it earlier, maybe a month ago, CCD was kinda trending, like, you, you know, maybe there was gonna be some room in there, but we'll, we'll, alright, we'll keep going, but we're gonna.
But you need a motion, don't you?
Hope, yeah, go ahead.
I would say right now, CCD.
Second.
Motion second on the floor for what? Let's see if you guys even know where you're at. Alright. What's the number? Six million eight hundred forty nine thousand three hundred forty five?
Right.
Motion a second on the floor. Further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Ryan?
I was just gonna say, good job.
Gonna say what?
Good job.
You're a, you're a trooper. Uh, CCD.
We're just gonna jump right to CCD, huh?
I don't know, did I miss something?
No, it's next on our list.
Oh, okay.
Next on our list.
What are all these things underneath? These are all falling under lit? Longevity?
I do, yes.
That's all, that's why it's off the side like.
I don't know where you are.
I'm glad you listened, 'cause they weren't listening, I mean.
No. There's.
Exactly.
Do we know what the unallocated balance of CCD is?
Uh, one.
One million.
One point four million?
Can you, can you ask how much that brings in normally?
So we carry forward one point five, so we have the cash balance of that, uh, you know, I mean, where are we at? What'd we bring in so far this year? One point five? Is that right?
I don't know, someone's gotta teach me how to read this.
Correct.
Um, so we brought in one point five, so you've expended one point six?
Correct.
Current month, a hundred, spend and slow down.
So, from, from a little bit of history on this fund, this fund for a while did not have enough allocated unallocated balance to stay in a budget. So some of these budget items that are in here are the ones of last resort that we use in the commissioner's office, would, don't have any other place to go, but we've attempted over probably a five or six-year period of time to allow that unallocated balance to grow to that one point five number, because I don't thi- think it's might be creating around one point five million a year, so.
So the real unallocated number is, yeah, take your appropriation, two point four, then you can add the expenditures, point six, but with eight hundred, you got one point four million down there. So you're around six hundred and twenty thousand of unallocated money.
Well, we've got a couple more months of bringing in.
Correct, as of right now.
Yeah.
This is CCD fund. So we're trying to get raises. I mean, is this not the fund to look at for?
Well, like you said, I mean, they, this was a couple of years ago, if you remember, the commissioners pushed out, um, the vehicles for the sheriff's department. We had to find, and I think that came out of, um, he ended up paying that out, maybe the, uh,
Your.
RJ, our federal prisoner money, maybe after.
Your IT discussion earlier, was that request within a general fund budget?
Yes.
Because we have, previously have three hundred and seventy five eight oh one in data processing here. That was the original place we started putting money for IT. So I think to your question, how are we helping the general fund, that would be a way to potentially help the general fund if you were to potentially consider putting some IT dollars here instead of back into the general fund as requested. Otherwise, we're just going to need to sit down and go through this budget in a much heavier depth, because we just got it healthy enough to be able to handle a budget being not slashed by the state, so. This and also, I mean, realistically. This and cable franchise, we can take a look at. The cable franchise is running at right now about a million dollar.
Yeah.
Because of the budgets we have left, there's nothing of this issue to deal with.
The cable franchise fee, that's the bill that you pay for cable, so as cable usage goes down, we're getting less money coming in, 'cause people are streaming now? Is that the case, or is it collected in another?
I think you're looking at it from the wrong level. This is what the cable companies had to pay to utilize our right-of-way.
I thought it was a fee on a bill.
They were, they weren't part of utility, so this is coming in to, for basically right-of-way rent. It is declining.
Oh, it will.
It gets renegotiated every so often.
Their assumption.
And, you know, that's not the only thing running in that cable. We also have the fiber network and things like that, so I'm not sure it's an unplugged issue.
Yeah, no, it's great there.
Alright.
So this is possibly another one we might be able to look at then, uh. Yeah. We wanted to tackle some things at the end of the session. We can look at now, what's in ca- what's in cable franchise right now is basically the Willow Creek and the Hunter South projects. That's what's sitting in roads and taxiways. And then we have nine one, the five eighty six in the lease payments. That's how we're paying for the E nine one one infrastructure lease. So we're gonna, we'd have to, again, look at the unallocated portion, see what we could grow this by, 'cause there's not, I just know, and this, I can look at these three numbers and know there's not hundreds of thousands of dollars to create.
Well, go back to cable franchise. Did you say?
Oh, on cable franchise, yeah. On cable franchise, on thirty seven three hundred lease payment, that's pay, that's the E, that's basically the Motorola payment for the E nine one one infrastructure. Under roadways and taxis, that's the Willow Creek extension and the Hunter South project.
But what are we doing with that right now, that we, that we're spending three hundred and sixty four thousand? I mean, are we moving forward with that?
Well, we're, yeah, we're paying our twenty percent portion as it's being designed, and it's going through its stages before it's, you know, we're not the right-of-way acquisition, but. So again, this would be one we can look at. We're gonna have to look at the unallocated balance, see what we can grow it by. Do we know what the un, do, do they have it up there in front of you with the un, how much?
Six hundred thousand.
I mean, we carried, yeah, we carry forward a million.
And do we know what that's projected to bring in roughly?
Um.
I mean, are we, yeah, we, we approved a budget at one point one.
One point one, right?
Yeah.
You know, but we're obviously, there was.
So you're bringing in two hundred grand this year?
This year?
Alright, alright, I, where are we at? I think we definitely have to, if you've got time, if we can get together next week, you know, and.
And, and emphasis on cable and CCD?
Yeah.
Because in, in all honesty, if there is money to be found, it'd be, this would be, the rest of these budgets don't have it in it.
And lit, I'd like to look at that. I mean, there's six million dollars. I know we've, I know we've cleaned it up a lot from Commissioner Biggs when we were buying fireworks, you know, from those days.
Little old days.
You know?
Yeah, you're not gonna find that.
We, we've cleaned that, I know, we've cleaned that button up a lot.
Yeah, and it's pretty, that one's pretty chiseled, to be honest with you. Kinda like, you know, when you look at the five eighty six on the lease payments on cable franchises, there's not a whole lot to do with that. How we paid the Motorola nine one one upgrade.
Right, CCD?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion, or do you?
I don't. What's the number at CCD? Two million three hundred and twenty three thousand eight hundred and nine dollars.
Make a motion, or second it.
Motion a couple seconds. Further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Where do we got? You know, my mind's trying to still cling on to some other things.
Emergency medical.
Emergency medical, that.
Fund eleven fifty one.
Move to approve.
Thousand dollars.
Wait, 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 wait.
Motion a second and.
Does that fund have any money in it?
Twenty nine nine forty four.
No, no.
No? I don't think this fund's needed anymore. This was the money that the hospital paid back to us on the contract for the ambulance that we then utilized to take care of the garages. On one of the last contract negotiations, we took that out.
Right here.
And then we bought that.
So, take that to zero and pass it at zero?
Correct.
Motion amended. We're second.
Zero, second, zero.
Yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. I mean, I don't know what's needed then to get rid of it, so it doesn't appear. Opioid unrestricted fund?
Restricted or unrestricted?
There's, there's both in there, so there's a little bit of confusion on there. One, two, three, seven is what we passed this year, and that's where everything is paid out of.
Okay.
Did we advertise this?
And we advertised it for the same fund. If we want to change it to unrestricted, then we'll go ahead and pass it as unrestricted to a transfer in January. You would rather have it out of one, two, three, eight instead of one, two, three, seven.
Well, ultimately, what we're attempting to do is separate the restricted from the unrestricted, right? So right now, we only have, we only have a fund for restricted.
Nope. We have funds for both.
We have funds from the commissioners for both. So we advertise for one for budget time?
Correct.
So then we, and what, and which one did we do it advertise for?
One, two, three, seven.
Which is restricted?
Right.
Okay, well then, I, I think you, and it's the restricted number they have in front of them, what currently has been awarded? So I think you can approve restricted. We'll come back in January, we'll do a budget for unrestricted, and we'll do an additional into it from there. It's not general fund money, and I think that'll clean it up.
Well, I even think, so, yeah, so this is the twelve thirty seven, and this is what we're paying.
Thank you.
The, um, the social worker out of, so.
Thank you.
Does that make sense? That's.
Yeah.
In front of us, so, alright, there's a motion in the floor.
Well, that was for twelve thirty eight.
Well.
One for twelve thirty seven now?
Yeah, that's the only thing we advertised, so.
We advertised this one, right? So if he makes motion, I second it.
Well.
We'll find.
They know, and they said we.
Yep.
We've advertised for the restricted budget, so you guys can pass the restricted.
Yep. So twelve thirty seven, ninety thousand eight hundred sixty one dollars.
Motion.
And second.
Motion a second. Further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. What did, what have we paid out of unrestricted? Was that the money that we gave?
That was the Bahrain House, the.
ERA and the three twenty, how you meant. And that, so that's not reoccurring, so, right, I mean, this is the.
But we have additional opioid money that's come in, and we have additional unrestricted.
Right.
So we can deal, again, we can deal with it.
Yeah, there's no, this is the important one.
It had to start in this fund because this is the fund that had the most money in it. Now, the fund is bringing in more money starting next year, and we now move.
Alright. Where are we at? Garage fund. Fifty thousand dollars, is that right?
Why the increase?
It's not a general fund, it's fee-based.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion a second.
Where's the fee come from?
Valpo.
That's the Valpo payment?
And popcorn fest.
Popcorn.
Oh, that was.
Journeyman.
Not yet.
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
Put the gate back down. Put the gate back down.
The madness.
Somebody was in mine too.
I know who that was.
Yeah, I know who that was.
Motion is second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hospital sale proceeds, fund four nine zero three. This ambulance?
It is.
Ambulance, uh, uh, six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for now.
What's a, just for fun, what's unallocated in here?
Don't do that.
Alright.
When's the contract?
We got a couple of years.
We got a couple of years, really?
End of twenty-five.
End of twenty-five?
Oh, so they can't raise it even though there's towns like Chesterton and Burns Harbor that just say, hey, we're done, go ahead, good luck?
We, Chesterton did it a long time ago.
They did it last, they did it last contract.
That was Burns Harbor and they had some, you know, they were out of money.
Good luck, huh? Yeah.
You know, they're out of money.
I hear you, Jeremy. But I'm glad that.
Conversation has to be had.
So we've got not quite three years, right? Two and a half.
Don't worry, we'll, we'll cover.
Got enough to get through twenty-five. It's a miracle.
I have a question. So they, they, they're in our building in Chesterton, right?
Yep.
Do we get a discount for that, pay us for that or a discount?
Yeah, it's all built in, yeah.
That's gonna be a fun.
And this six sixty-five isn't all the,
No.
Isn't all the Northwest.
What's the whole bill?
This is the total we do for ambulances, but that's, I'm gonna, one seventy-five and sixty-six, three fifty.
Goes to Portage and South Haven.
Okay.
Is this included part of that public safety committee that we're working on, this ambulance?
Yeah, that subject has come up, yes.
Yeah.
But it's not being paid out of this.
No, I mean, just, uh,
Oh, yeah.
The, the discussion.
Under discussion.
Yes.
I would think right now it should be the only subject, but it's glaring one, right in front of us.
Gonna be a big one. Lot, lots of headwinds in that subject.
Yeah. Alright, where are we at?
Motion.
Six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to pay for Burns Harbor. Motion is second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose same sign.
I know someone that's after you, be careful.
Yeah.
He's little and feisty.
Cable franchise.
I know, I know.
Cable franchise.
Just mean.
One million, one hundred thousand dollars. Make a motion, approve. Motion.
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sign. Countywide cat nine-one-one system.
Motion to approve.
Motion second. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. What happened?
Historical site preservation.
Historical site.
Yeah, I know, everything got.
Went up a dollar.
Hundred and twenty bucks.
Looking at my paperwork, wondering what I did. Where are we at? Five hundred, five thousand dollars?
Went up one twenty. I'd make a motion, approve.
Second.
There's a motion, a second on the floor, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Alright, where are we at? Foundation? Foundation. An increase, a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, we increasing in this budget? Handle it. What's the increase?
You are too?
Yeah.
Oh, where'd it go?
Why is there an increase to this budget?
Where'd you get it?
Aging asks for an increase.
Oh, they asked for an increase?
It's deeper down.
Um, I don't. Take that increase out, I mean, I don't know, let's.
What's the bottom line on that foundation budget?
Might be too far. It's like, um, family, it should be this one. Wait, let me see here.
It is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Five point one, we're bumping into that.
That.
We're bumping.
Mm-hmm.
What is that number, five?
It's like, I think it might be five one. I think.
What, what's that, Scott? The?
The, our estimated foundation smoothing amount that's gonna come.
Is what, five point one?
I mean, we are real close.
I mean, yeah. I know there's requests and, you know, I, I guess, um, council on aging, if, uh, I thought I saw Bruce here, wants to come up and give a spiel, but I don't know if there's the, the room, available room there, but, well, let's, let's, and then he can come up and talk.
Just because I don't know who, who reduced the maintenance payments. Was that like a nine-one-one?
I don't know. I didn't know.
What do you mean reduced?
Well, because within the foundation, well, I'm looking at.
It went up.
Oh, went up.
Fifteen thousand.
I'm going, okay, I'm sorry.
Is it not supposed to go up fifteen thousand? Can it stay the same?
And, and then because it's the foundation budget and it doesn't truly have an unallocated balance, not the way that you're all used to, that would be, if nine-one-one needs that increase, that would be something I would look at in their surcharge fund. And if, I believe, earlier, you guys had their health insurance within there, which I, they haven't traditionally done that. We've traditionally tried to do it with departments that have a fee-based.
Exactly.
But, and so I don't think it's a bad thing, but I also think that we can ease into the health insurance side of things a little, but this foundation budget, we, we don't, we don't really have a way to go over very easy.
Oh, we can't because we can't take from the balance of the, of the.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Right, so that's where, that's where this is tricky, because you have to stay underneath that, that smoothing amount, correct?
Correct. And we don't, and we don't have that. So. Is the contractual service the nine-one-one request?
Were both those requests yours, the maintenance and the contractual?
Scott's trying to do is put it, he's trying to put it somewhere else.
I'm trying to put it. Yes.
You're gonna have to come up to Mike.
We can't keep raising because we're at a fixed amount.
Correct.
Can't have a, a fund raised every year because we're gonna go over our.
I don't know if it's on, you might have turned it on.
So irrespect-
Right, you, exactly.
Irrespective of whether you think it's an appropriate increase or not, if you think it's an appropriate increase, my suggestion would be to take it to the surcharge fund, and if the surcharge fund can't support it, reduce your health insurance number in there.
So what do we got going on with this?
Okay, um, the contractual services, fifteen thousand dollar increase based on, um, Adams Remco, S-Race software increase, Rave alerting contracts, those all increased this year. The contractual services I had in my budget last year, um, I did not use it, but I, at the, at the, um, guidance of the commissioners, I had originally requested a PIO position, and they thought it might be wiser for me, instead of creating a new position, to use contractual services. My goal with this line item is, um, as you know, we have Rave. Right now, it's an alerting system. Um, most of us are familiar with Smart nine-one-one. But there is a sister, um, software component on the platform that is called facility profiles, that we have not even tapped. We've had Rave now for over twelve years, and we only have a handful, I think twenty-eight, facility profiles within the county. The facility profile option is phenomenal and incredibly underused. We're paying for this, but we just don't have the bandwidth to get out there. Um, it's a, it's a, it's an endeavor and an effort that we need to work in conjunction with the public. And we, I would like to, in lieu of not creating a PIO position, which is really my desire, but if I can use this line item, I can have, have this, this, uh, facility profiles expanded. Let me tell you just a little bit about facility profiles. So Smart nine-one-one, if we know about it, it's an individual profile that when the nine-one-one dispatcher answers a call, if you have a profile set up, um, which is free to use, then the nine-one-one dispatcher will get everything that you include in your profile. Medical, all of your phone numbers can be associated with. It's, it's, it's a very good feature. So consider that on a facility level. So you could have a high, you could have, let's just say, Alprazol High School. If they were to establish a facility profile, they can build it out as robustly or vaguely, and it really, the entire build is on them. But it, you know, it gives phenomenal information to dispatch. We would have entry exits, AED locations. We actually have the capability of linking to live cameras. Of course, that's at the, at the permission of the, um, high schools or facilities. But you can understand how beneficial this is to first responders. So, we don't utilize that nearly enough. We haven't even scratched the surface. And, um, because of the other projects, P-one, fire station alerting, new PBX system for the nine-one-one center that I'm working on, I have not been able to really dive into this, uh, component of, of what I think would definitely benefit and, and enhance Porter County facilities.
But we've already got. Oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, uh, Mr. President, if I may.